I want to call this meeting the Belton Independent School District Board of Trustees. Order, a quorum of board members is present, and this meeting has been duly called in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. If you will join me in the pledge to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Okay. It is 5:02, and at this time, the board will go into closed session to consult with attorney, Ellen Spalding, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney. We'll be back. Okay, it is 5:16, and we will reconvene in open session. The next item on the agenda is the Level 3 appeal of the consolidated grievance of the Texas Classroom Teachers Association. Connie, is the recorder on?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. The date is October 16th, 2017, and the time is 5:17 PM. A quorum of board members is present, and all members, in fact, are present. At this time, counsel for the Belton ISD Board of Trustees, Ellen Spalding, is also present, and at this time, I'm going to turn this over to her to preside over this hearing. Thank you, Ms. Spalding.
Great, thank you, Mr. President. This is a Level 3 appeal, and it's an appeal based on timeliness. Specifically, the Texas Classroom Teachers Association appeals the dismissal of its grievance, which has been determined at lower levels to have been untimely filed. Since board policy requires that all time limits be strictly followed, the timeliness of the consolidated grievance will be the sole focus of our hearing today. The board requests that the parties address only the issue of timeliness, and the board will not consider the merits underlining the timeliness decision in accordance with policy. The board has received copies of the grievance forms and supporting documentation, the administration's responses at Levels 1 and 2, and the notice of appeal to Level 3, and all other documents or correspondence submitted and reviewed in the course of this grievance. It is my understanding that TCTA has also received a copy of the grievance record. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
All documents were delivered to the board and to TCTA at least three days before the hearing as required by board policy. In order to provide the most accurate record possible, a tape recording of this proceeding is being made. Please avoid talking when others are speaking so that the tape will reflect the proceedings accurately. Also, please identify yourself when you speak so that the record will be clear. I will now ask each board member to introduce himself or herself for the record, and state whether he or she can render a fair and impartial decision in this matter. I'll start to my left.
Jeff Norwood, yes, I can.
Oh, sorry.
Great.
Janet Lee, yes, I can.
Mike Callen, yes, I can.
Randy Pittinger, yes, I can.
Sue Jordan, yes, I can.
Leo Camden, yes, I can.
Ty Taggart, yes, I can.
Thank you, board members. I will now ask the parties to introduce yourselves for the record. Will the TCTA representatives state your name for the record, please?
Julie Leahy, for the Texas Classroom Teachers Association.
Thank you. Will the representatives for the Belton Independent School District Administration please state your names for the record?
Suzanne Kincaid, superintendent.
Robert Muller, superintendent.
Thank you. This appeal will be conducted in accordance with the district's policy governing public complaints, Policy GF Local. This is a grievance appeal and not a formal evidentiary hearing. The policy does not provide for questioning or cross-examining of witnesses or board members. In order for the board to receive all the information necessary to make an informed decision, this appeal presentation will be conducted as follows. The TCTA and administration will each make presentations to the board. Each side will be given 10 minutes to be used for presentation and rebuttal. Each side may divide its total 10 minutes, as it wishes, between presentation and rebuttal. Ms. Leahy will address the board first, and then the administration may present its response. Ms. Leahy can then use any time she has reserved of her 10 minutes, and finally, the administration can do the same. Board members may then ask clarifying questions of either party, but the parties may not ask questions directly to one another. Again, the board requests that the parties not discuss the substance or merits of the complaint or the remedies sought, but rather focus on whether the grievance was filed within the required business days from the dates TCTA knew or should have known of the decision or action that gives rise to the grievance in accordance with board policy. Are there any questions from the parties before we begin? Hearing none. Ms. Leahy, do you wish to reserve any time?
Yes, I'd like to reserve two minutes.
Thank you very much. And administration, do you wish to reserve any time?
We'll reserve two minutes.
Great. I will serve as the timekeeper tonight, and I will give you a one-minute warning on each of your times. Ms. Leahy, you may begin your presentation. I think the board would like you to present the podium.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Can you hear me? My name is Julie Leahy. I am an attorney with the Texas Classroom Teachers Association. I'm here on behalf of Rosemary Hans and the Texas Classroom Teachers Association, the Belton CTA. The Belton CTA consists of approximately 200 classroom teachers, librarians, diagnosticians, and other instructional employees that are employed by the Belton ISD, and I am here at their request and on their behest. The first thing I want to tell you is that I'm not here to beat up on you. I'm not here to blame the district for anything that happened. I am here to tell you about the experience that your employees have had, and to discuss ways that we can move forward from what occurred. I am limiting my argument to timeliness, so therefore, I'd like to begin by discussing the timeframe here. The data breach occurred on January 27th, 2017. Apparently, two employees of the Belton ISD improperly provided 1,700 copies of school district employee W-2 forms to an unknown third party in response to a phishing email scam. The data breach was discovered by the district on Monday, January 30th, and reported to the Belton Police, the IRS, and the FBI. The affected employees were notified by email on Tuesday, January 31st, 2013, and then two employees who were directly involved in the release of the data resigned. The district's position is that this grievance should have been filed within 15 business days from the date, apparently, that this breach occurred. The reason that we disagree with this is because the breach is not necessarily what these people are complaining about. What they are complaining about is the remedies that have been provided to the district or the lack thereof. Specifically, the first remedy that they are requesting is more comprehensive or different type of protection for identity theft. We mentioned in our grievance that the Tasby data breach, which occurred on June 16th, 2017, was a situation in which data was breached yet again, and unfortunately, we all know that since that time, Experian itself has breached personal data. So I think that the cat's kind of out of the bag in terms of that personal information being breached. I think that we can all agree that there is problems with the idea of offering identity theft as a solution to a data breach of this nature. So what they are requesting is that they be offered a different type of identity theft protection, more comprehensive and stronger identity theft protection. A big part of the reason for that, one thing that you all need to remember, and I've referenced this, is that many people have had their data stolen. Probably every single person in this room has had some of their data stolen at one point or another. W-2 forms are a different thing. They're a different beast, and the reason they're a different beast is because that creates problems with the IRS, which brings us to our second requested remedy. Many of the individuals that I represent have been contacted by the IRS. Many were prohibited from filing returns. They were told that they could not file returns until they reported to the IRS office in Waco to fill out an affidavit confirming their identity. This is an issue that is specific to the fact that W-2 forms were released. As we all know, the IRS does not operate on flex hours, so many of these people have had to travel to Waco during school hours, or anticipate that they may still have to travel to Waco during school hours in order to attend to business required by the IRS as a result of the data breach that occurred. What we are asking for is that this time be considered professional developmental leave on district business, and that employees not be required to use their personal leave in order to attend to this business. As to the issue of timeliness on this, the reality is that we don't know yet how many employees are going to be asked to report to the IRS. Some of the affected members had already filed their returns when the breach occurred, and some have not yet been contacted. Others have been told that, yes, you came, you filled in the affidavit, we appreciate that, we're probably going to ask you to come back. We know of at least one individual who has had a fraudulent return filed with her name on it, and we anticipate that that individual may have to meet with the IRS on multiple occasions. We believe that the need for this leave can be fairly easily documented. Individuals can provide copies of their correspondence that they received from the IRS in request for a grant of business leave in order to attend to this business. And again, as to the issue of timeliness, this is something that is happening to our members on an ongoing basis, and we would expect that it will continue to happen for an ongoing basis for some time to come. The third thing that we are asking for is development of a policy and training for employees who are responsible for safeguarding confidential employee data to ensure that confidential employee data is protected from future release. What we're looking for is something that would help prevent this from happening again on an employee's standpoint. One aspect of this situation that is often overlooked, and that is very unfortunate, is the two individuals lost their jobs. And they lost their jobs not because they did something malicious, or mean, or awful, but for doing what they thought was the correct thing. They thought they were responding to a request from the superintendent to provide documents. Had there been a policy in place related to the protection of the information being requested, or had there been some sort of safeguards that they were required to follow, those folks might still have their jobs today, and these people may not have had their information breached. Protection of confidential employee information is an ongoing obligation of the district. The Commissioner of Education has acknowledged on multiple occasions that ongoing and continuous violations are grounds for allowing a grievance to proceed. We are of the opinion that the events and the incidents associated with this grievance are ongoing and will continue to be ongoing for many of your employees, perhaps for years to come. What we are asking for is that the district acknowledge that this is not a one-time event, that it's an ongoing event, and that it should put steps into place to help the employees who have been affected and who will continue to be affected going forward. Thank you very much.
In January, I learned that a targeted sphere phishing email message had been sent to a business office employee requesting W-2 information. The email used my name to request employee W-2 information, which included employee names, addresses, social security numbers, and earnings information. Unfortunately, our employee replied to the message and attached approximately 1,700 W-2s for current and former employees for the calendar year 2016. The affected employees had opted to receive printed W-2s instead of accessing them electronically via our financial software system. Not all employees were impacted. Protecting our employees' privacy is an important responsibility, and I take it very seriously. As soon as I learned about the breach, I worked closely with my staff to ensure that we notified all of our employees of the data breach as quickly as possible. We also notified federal, state, and local law enforcement and taxing authorities. Once we provided formal notice to all of our employees in February, we continued to communicate with our employees throughout the spring semester, answering their questions and providing them information. We were unaware that any of Belton ISD's TCTA members were unhappy, and to date, other than Rosemary Hans, who has been named in this grievance, we've received no TCTA member complaint, other than the complaint received on June 21st, 2017, months after we informed our staff of the data breach. When we receive a grievance, our first step is to review board policy concerning the process, and we do our very best to follow the board's policy carefully. Because we determined that TCTA's complaints were not filed by the deadline established by board policy, the complaints were dismissed. At this time, I would like to ask Dr. Muller, our Deputy Superintendent, to review the relevant dates with you and explain the basis of our decision. Dr. Muller considered TCTA's Level 2 appeal. Dr. Muller.
Okay, as Dr. Kincaid has indicated, the administration strictly follows board policy regarding the consideration of all formal grievances. The guiding principle of the board's policy is to address all concerns informally as soon as possible to allow for early resolution at the lowest possible administrative level. However, when a formal grievance is filed, the administration follows the formal process as set out in the board's policy, starting with consideration of the timeliness of the complaint. Now, your board policy is pretty clear on timeliness, and it says it requires that formal complaints must be filed within 15 days of the date the individual first knew, or with reasonable diligence should have known, of the decision or action giving rise to the complaint. Your policy also goes on to state, "All time limits must be strictly followed unless modified by mutual written consent." And then according to policy, if the complaint is not timely filed, the complaint may be dismissed at any point during the complaint process. Now, the TCTA complaint arises from events well beyond the 15-day deadline, and for that reason, we informed TCTA that the complaints were untimely and would not be heard. We also informed TCTA that they could appeal that decision, which they have done. Because we're focusing on the timeliness of the complaint, I'd like to review some of the key dates. January 27th, 2017. On this date, as you heard earlier, the district experienced a data breach that compromised the confidentiality of employees' W-2s. No later than February 7th, all affected employees were informed of the breach and provided with an opportunity to enroll in two years of credit monitoring and identity theft resolution services. On May 16th, 2017, according to Ms. Leahy, TCTA held a meeting for its members employed by Belton ISD to discuss the issues related to the data breach. On June 21st, 2017, TCTA's first complaint, which is found in Tab 1 of your notebook, was filed. June 21st is five months after the data breach, and almost six weeks, or 25 business days, after the meeting with Belton ISD employees who are members of TCTA. On June 27th, TCTA's second complaint, which is found in Tab 3 of your binder, is 29 business days after TCTA admitted that they knew of the employees' issues related to the data breach. Upon receipt of these complaints, we inform TCTA that the board policy, and particularly the 15-day deadline, was discussed or submitted to TCTA. Now, TCTA is appealing the decision that these complaints were considered untimely. So tonight, like the Level 1 and Level 2 hearings held prior to tonight, I'm only going to address the timeliness issue. So during the Level 1 hearing, Mr. Schiller clarified that Ms. Leahy knew her members' concerns on May 16th, 2017. She explained that she had hosted a meeting with the Belton chapter of TCTA regarding the situation on May 16th, and it was on that date, according to Ms. Leahy, that some TCTA members told her they would like to file a grievance. Now, this is in the transcript that is provided to you, and I could call your attention to Tab 5 on Page 4, the Level 1 hearing transcript. So if you want to turn to that, it's Page 412. And Mr. Schiller states, "So you're talking mid-May, then?" And Ms. Leahy says, "That would be when I had the meeting with Belton CTA regarding the situation. Yes, that's when they told me at that point they would like to file a grievance." And then you see further down the page, there's some clarification on what is that date, and on the next page, on 512, it talks about that date was May 16th.
One minute remaining.
Then during the Level 2 hearing, Ms. Leahy confirmed that she actually knew of the TCTA members' complaints prior to May 16th, and you can find that on Tab 9, Page 4. She went on to describe some of the issues discussed at that May 16th meeting, including which employees had been contacted by the IRS and whether employees were treated the same. So I would point out that no employees have appeared with Ms. Leahy at either Level 1 or Level 2, or, I believe, tonight. Although she names Rosemary Hans, a teacher at Bex, Ms. Hans has never appeared with her, nor has any other employee. I recommend that you uphold the administration's decision at Level 2 that this complaint was not timely filed.
Is that all?
Yes.
Miss Leahy, you have three minutes remaining.
The administration's dismissal of our complaint based on timeliness rests on an assumption that what we are complaining about is the data breach, and that's incorrect. What we are complaining about here are the remedies that have been offered by the district in order to correct the data breach, and those remedies, first of all, were learned of after the data breach at various times by various members. The dates that were stated by the administration are correct, and we do not dispute them. However, even after that May meeting, I can tell you that some of the members that I spoke with were first contacted by the IRS as an initial matter, or were contacted and asked to come as a follow-up meeting. So these are things that happen on an ongoing basis. Another thing that happened after the May meeting was that the grievance learned that their data had been breached by Tasby. They were offered a year of Experian credit monitoring by Tasby as a result of this data breach, and it became apparent at that point that the remedy initially offered by the district of the Experian credit monitoring had become redundant. And one of the things that we asked for in the Level 1 grievance, I believe, was that the credit monitoring run consecutively for two years instead of concurrently for one. The reason that we asked that at that time was because the filing of the breach of the Tasby data information was a factor for some folks in filing the grievance. But most importantly, I think that we need to understand that the Commissioner of Education has acknowledged that ongoing violations do allow for the filing of a grievance, and the reason for that is because the Commissioner has acknowledged that some situations evolve, and some situations continue, and that's exactly what's happening here. One thing that was brought up by administration during the course of this grievance process was that Ms. Hans, thank you, has not been contacted by the IRS. That doesn't mean she won't be contacted by the IRS. So what the district is saying, in effect, is that it then becomes incumbent on every single person who wants to complain to complain once they are contacted by the IRS or at some point in the future. What we are saying is, let's be proactive. Let's address this. Let's say our employees have been damaged, we want to help them, we want to fix the situation, let's do that. I am here because they asked me to be here, and they have told me what they are looking for from the district. So I am one person, but I represent many. Thank you very much.
Administration, you have two minutes.
I just wanted to tell the board that I've reviewed all of the materials that have been presented to you tonight, and I concur with the decisions made by Mr. Schiller and Dr. Muller at Levels 1 and 2. I asked the board to uphold the administration's decision at Level 2 and dismiss TCTA's complaint as untimely. Again, I deeply regret that personal information of our employees was compromised. Protecting our employees' privacy is an important responsibility, and I take it very seriously. Thank you.
Board members, do you have any questions for either party?
I actually have a question. Ms. Leahy, you're representing Ms. Hans, and I understand that, that's specific, but it sounded like she hasn't had any kind of negative effect, and there are others that you're saying you represent, but is there anybody else who has specifically authorized you to represent them who has had a problem?
We represent, and you may want to ask Ms. Spalding to explain the concept of associational standing.
I'm asking you, who you represent, I just want to clarify who you're representing.
I represent Rosemary Hans, and I represent members of the Belton CTA.
And have all of those members authorized you to be here?
The CTA has authorized me to be here.
So you're representing the organization?
I represent Ms. Hans, and I represent Rosemary.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's all.
Any other questions from any other board member? It is now time for the board to deliberate. Prior to doing so, does the board wish to consult with me regarding any legal issues in the appeal?
Yes.
In that case, we will do so in closed session, but since I can't adjourn us to closed session, I'll be quiet.
Okay, well, it is 5:41, and the board will adjourn to closed session to consult with board trustees' attorney regarding the appeal as provided for in Sections 551.071 of the Texas Government Code. Board is now reconvening in open session at 5:49 PM. Is the recorder on?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. It is my recommendation that the board dismiss TCTA's consolidated grievances untimely and uphold the administration's decision at Level 2. Is there a motion to approve? A motion from Mr. Callen, a segment from Mr. Norwood. Any other comments or discussion? Okay, this will be a roll-call vote, so we'll go into order. Norwood? Yes or no? Yes. Voting for the motion or against?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I need to say your name and...
Janet Lee, yes.
Mike?
Mike Callen, yes.
Sue Jordan, yes.
Leo Camden, yes.
Ty Taggart, yes.
And Randy Pittinger, yes. Motion is approved unanimously, and that closes our action. The motion has passed, consolidated grievance is dismissed. For the record, this announcement of the board's decision is made in the presence of the complainant, Ms. Leahy, and that concludes this action. I will add, on behalf of the board, our appreciation for the administration, and specifically human resources efforts to provide assistance to our employees. Our employees' safety and remedy of problems is utmost concern to us, and so we do appreciate the efforts that you've made, including making sure that they were provided two years, which is essentially twice the standard of practice from every other data breach that we're hearing about in the media. And so we're appreciative of the efforts, and we will ask the Human Resources Administration continue to support our staff in having the training they need and having the support they need to find remedies to any problems that they may encounter in the future. So thank you very much for that. Okay, we will take a brief break so we can get our students out in the hall, because we're going to recognize some students. It is 5:51, and this is, don't leave, they're just going to take a couple of minutes to get them in. Thank you, Ms. Leahy, for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spalding.
Have a great meeting.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to come back from our break, if you will. I'm not your break, but if y'all want to have the students come in, they're welcome too while we talk. That won't bother us. Does any board member have any item from the consent agenda you'd like pulled for discussion? Hearing none, I do want to, so we're going to pull items J and K off until we actually take action on the employment of that individual. Seems appropriate. Other items on the consent agenda, the minutes of the previous meetings, September 11th, 2017, special meeting, September 18th, 2017, regular meeting, the unaudited financial report for the month ending September 30th, 2017, gifts, grants, and bequests, I believe that's on Page 80, there you go, 81. Thank you very much for those donations. We have four expenditures over $50,000, all of which are planned and budgeted expenses and so previously discussed. We have the E-Rate Category 2 Enterprise Wireless Project Year 2 for NetSync Network Connections, $423,120.48. We have the 2017 District Computer Lab and Computer Library Upgrades, $90,914. We have the 2017 District VoIP Phone Upgrades, $91,922.40. We have the Storage Area Network SAN Lifecycle, NetSync Network Solutions as part of the -- We have the Storage Area Network SAN Lifecycle NetSync Network Solutions as part of the DR Cooperative Purchasing Agreement at a cost of $284,463.28. And we have the summary of the 2017 Tax Roll for Belton ISD that's received from the Belton Appraisal District, approved the summary of the 2017 Tax Roll presented by the Belton Tax Appraisal District in accordance with Section 26.09E of the Property Tax Code. We have the Rogers, Morris, and Grover LLP Engagement Letter. We have the final plats of the BISD FM 2483 Edition and the BISD Carriage House Edition within the city of Temple, Texas, to approve that final plat and authorize Randy Pittenger, Board President, to sign the dedications and plats on behalf of the board. We have the petition requesting annexation by the City of Belton, Texas, of 41.08 acres of land, more or less, out of the James P. Wallace Survey Abstract Number 906 in Belton, Texas, being part of a 109.18 acre tract owned by Belton ISD located on Shanklin Road and Loop 121. We've talked about that when we purchased that property, that we wanted all of the property to be within the city, and the city has initiated annexation proceedings. We have the resolution for appointment to the Tax Appraisal District of Belton Board of Directors. Robert Jones has served in that capacity for several years. This position jointly represents Belton ISD and the city of Belton, and so we both have to agree and both appoint. Recommendation is to appoint Christopher Flohr, and we appreciate Chris's willingness to serve in that and express our appreciation to Robert Jones for his service on behalf of our community. Again, we're going to skip J and K. Please remind me to do that. We have, next item is the selection of the competitive sealed proposals as the construction delivery method for the Belton High School Roofing Project, Project C, Summer 2018, and authorize the Superintendent to issue a request for proposals for the project, select a community to evaluate and rank the proposals, and bring the recommendation rankings back to the board for approval. We have a memorandum of agreement with Education Service Center, Region 12, regarding Skyward Student Software Support. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda? I have a motion from Mr. Camden, a second from Mr. Taggart. All in favor of the motion, raise a hand. Passed unanimously. How we doing on time? Everybody here to be, that we're recognizing? I don't want to miss anybody. Okay. Well, I don't want to recognize, I don't want to miss anybody. So since we said six, we'll go, let's see. What should we talk about next? Hey, let's do employment. You going to start that? You want to start that? Let's do some employee, because that's kind of a fun...
I'm happy to do this one. I think I'll go to the podium and get from there. Well, I'll start with personnel this evening. I just want to recommend Jennifer Land as our new CFO for Belton ISD. Jennifer's in the back there. Stand, Jennifer.
Please stand up here.
Recognized for the board. Jennifer comes highly recommended to Belton ISD from the Texas Association of School Business Officials. She has extensive knowledge and skills and a financial background with over 16 years of experience in public school districts. She has a bachelor's degree and a master's degree in business administration, University of Texas, Mrs. Lee, and she's a licensed certified public accountant and a registered Texas School Business Administrator. And we feel confident that she has the skills, that she needs to continue to help us strengthen our business practices, and it's my pleasure to recommend her this evening. Her husband Rudy is a teacher and a coach at Lake Belton Middle School, so she'll be joining him in the school district. So it's my honor to recommend Jennifer.
Jennifer, you want to say anything? Well, come on up. We're not going to let you get away. Just sitting way in the back.
Come on up.
I had the opportunity to visit with Jennifer briefly before the meeting, so want to welcome you here, but I want to give you an opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Good evening, President Pittenger, board members, and Dr. Kincaid. I am so thrilled to be here, to be part of the Belton Tiger family, which, that may be changing, I guess, maybe later on. We'll see about that. No, the Tiger part. The Tiger part. I'm not quitting. I'm not. You haven't even improved me yet. But I am thrilled to be here. I was telling President Pittenger earlier that my high school alma mater is red, so I'm used to saying "go big red," so I'm excited about that. But more importantly, I have a passion for kids. I am in school business because of that, because I love children. And the recognition part of the board meetings, that's always my favorite part, because even though I'm not in the classroom directly, I know that everything we do as school business employees will impact children in some way or another. So just know that everything I do is simply because I want to make kids successful, and the people who are touching and reaching our kids, they need to know that as well. So thank you.
You're in the right place, because that's how we feel and that's what we say. We're about to get to our favorite part of recognizing our students, but you're joining a strong team who've done great things, but we're excited about how you take us to the next level and bring new things and new perspectives to us to help us get even better. So you'll hear a little bit later our first report, which, hard to beat, but we have high expectations from our business office and look forward to what you bring. You come highly recommended and with impeccable recommendations, so I commend you for that, and thank you for your willingness to come join us, so...
Thank you for having me, and it's going to be great.
It's going to be great. Oh, absolutely. Mr. Schiller, you want to give us the... Okay, y'all can clap for her. That's fine. Okay. Mr. Schiller, why don't you give us the rest of the report, and then we'll act on all that, all the recommendations.
Absolutely. The other recommendation we have tonight is Timothy Goodridge for Assistant Principal Belton High School. Timothy is here with us tonight.
Mr. Goodridge, stand up. Come on now.
Bachelor's degree in history, has a Master's of Education, has eight years of experience, and has been with us for five years, and we're looking forward to working with Tim in his new role.
And he is not unfamiliar to the board, because he's been here. He's been one of our Teachers of the Year. He's a highly respected and acclaimed teacher, and so look forward to your opportunity there. I guess I should, you want to say anything? Got anything? Okay. Got you. Didn't want to put you on the spot, and Jennifer Land's going to be a hard act to follow, it looks like, so... Okay, anything else we need?
Those are the recommendations for now. This month, we also did hire a teacher and have three resignations that are included in the report.
And just as a reminder, last month, we changed our policy to where that does not take board action for us to hire, but we do have the recommendation for these two administrative positions. So is there a motion to approve? I have a motion from Ms. Lee, a second from Mr. Cowan. Any other comments or questions? All in favor of the motion, raise a hand. Passed unanimously. Welcome. Thank you for your willingness to serve our students. We appreciate you, and we look forward to what you bring to make us even better and help us serve our students in an even greater way. Okay. Thank you, Todd. Now, let's get to the recognitions, because I think everybody's here, and we've... Oh, no, wait. I'm sorry. I need to pick up these two items on the consent agenda. The resolution designating signatories for text pool, local government pool, investment accounts, and the designation of signatories for First Public Lone Star Local Government Pool Investment Accounts. Both of those are for Jennifer Land. So we wanted to hire her before we did that. Is there a motion to approve? I give a motion from Ms. Jordan, a second from Mr. Cowan. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, raise a hand. Passed unanimously. Now, let's recognize students.
And I'm going to start.
You're going to start. Okay.
I'm going to start us off with some of the best news ever about our national merit semifinalist, Serena Shador. Serena, why don't you come on up and stand up front?
There you go. Come on now.
All right, straight up front, and Mr. Camden will join you there. Serena Shador is a senior at Belton High School. She earned a perfect score on the ACT and has been selected as a national merit semifinalist for her performance on the PSAT last year as an 11th grader. To qualify as a national merit semifinalist, Serena's high scores on the PSAT placed her in the top 1% of more than 1.6 million students who took the test last fall. And as the next step in the scholarship competition, it's awkward, isn't it?
She's talking about you, so we want you to stand up here the whole time she talks about you.
I'll come join you in just a second. She will be submitting essays, recommendations, and additional test scores to the National Merit Scholarship Corporation, and finalists will be announced between April and June of 2018. She earned the highest possible ACT composite score of 36, an accomplishment that less than 1/10 of 1% of students who take the ACT achieve on average. Less than 1/10 of 1%. Pretty impressive. In the U.S. High School graduating class of 2016, only 2,235 out of nearly 2.1 million graduates who took the ACT earned a perfect score of 36. So congratulations to Serena. We have a special, something that we're starting this year, that Serena gets to be the very first one, and we're going to award her with a special banner that will hang in Belton High School with her picture and her name on it. So we're going to roll that out. Dr. Love Smith, come on up, because this is all about academics, and we're going to take a picture with Serena.
This is a serious photo op. We are really proud of you, and we are going to brag on you all we can.
And I think that deserves a standing ovation.
I want to see this. Good job. Look at this. Check this out. Get over there, buy that banner. Okay, this is a really big deal, guys. I hope you had an opportunity to read some of the articles or see her video. An extraordinary accomplishment by an extraordinary student who has great things ahead.
I'm going to let Serena introduce her parents. This is a really big deal.
Yes, it's a big deal, and it's a parent celebration time. Mom and dad.
That'd be recognized.
Great job. Congratulations. We're proud of you.
And we have a little video of Serena talking about how she did all of this, if we can show that clip.
I took the SAT in middle school, like, as a seventh or eighth grader, so I knew, like, it was encouraging to see, like, I did well on this test, even as a seventh grader, but I can do even better. And so I, like, actually, like, I bought an SAT book, prep book, in middle school, even though I wasn't going to take it soon. But, like, I just knew that that was in the back of my mind, and, like, I signed up for, like, the SAT question of the day, which was, like, very manageable, and I didn't, like, spend, like, two hours every night for four years studying. But I think just, like, having that goal in the back of your mind, that, like, even doing well in your classes and studying for classes will benefit you in other areas, such as, like, your SAT, your ACT, or your PSAT. I, well, when I took the PSAT, like, in 10th grade, I saw, like, I compared my scores. Like, for example, my math score was a little lower than, like, my English score, so I knew, like, I needed to work on my math. So I bought a book specifically for math, and it had a bunch of math drills, and, like, they had algebra and geometry. So, like, I realized, like, especially, like, geometry was, like, harder for me, I guess, than algebra. So, like, I knew that I would need to work on geometry drills, and I practiced a lot of that. And then just practice tests were really helpful, and a lot of them are free. Like, if you Google "practice test," they will appear, and you can print them off, and you can take them. Like, I would write down, like, on this practice test, I made this score, and because I missed these concepts, like, because I forgot about this geometric formula, and, like, and then I would know in the future, like, what I needed to study to do better. I would say set a goal. Like, they might have a goal score for the college they want, or a goal score for a program, or, like, a scholarship. So they need to, like, compare that goal with what they currently are, like, testing on in practice tests or what they have in the past. And so, like, they need to, like, see this gap and realize that, like, it is something that they can change and improve. And so they need to find ways, like, specific ways. It's not just, like, oh, read a book and you're going to improve, or, oh, study more. Like, they need to find tangible ways to improve that goal, which is, like, taking a practice test every weekend, or doing, like, asking your math teacher for help in concepts that you don't remember from middle school, or things like that that can really, like, improve your score. I definitely dance to it all. I think that some people see, like, high scores or, like, national merits only if they're, like, some prodigies that, like, often random parts of the area, like, the state. But I think, like, it's, I only achieved it because I studied. It's not, I didn't, like, just wake up and take it, and I got this great score. Like, it was just because I worked hard. And so I think that, like, if the juniors study for their PSAT, and the sophomores study for their PSAT, like, they can achieve it. And I think that, like, when the district implements new programs to help them score higher, it really can, like, help them in their scores. I think the scores are really, like, crucial, like, to colleges, and they're looking for applicants. And so they, like, will email me or, like, send me mail, like, say, like, based on your school scores to qualify for this, or, like, based on your GPA and your ACT score, you can get a whole ride. And so I think it's really nice to know that, like, colleges appreciate, like, your work, and, like, it pays off to, like, study and get a good score, because I can go to more, like, prestigious colleges, or I can go to a college for cheaper, for free, because of my scores. Like, they've waged my application fee waivers, and, like, they've, or, like, they've given me streamlined applications, so they know that, like, since I have higher scores, I'm a top applicant to them. And so I can get priority consideration for scholarships and priorities consideration for admission. And so it's cheaper, and it's easier, and it's faster for a lot of schools based on the scores that college board or the ACT shows them. I would say that it's definitely something you can prepare for. It seems very challenging, like, something that you can't conquer, I guess, like, but it is something that you can control, and it does depend on you. Like, the amount of effort and study time you put into it will pay off, because if you never study, you're probably not going to do as well as you could. And so there's always room for improvement based on, like, how much work you put into it. My name's Serena Shador. I'm a senior at Belton High School. I am a national merit semifinalist, and I achieved a perfect score on the ACT.
Oh, great job.
Congratulations. And I think Serena can go anywhere she wants to go to college.
Anywhere.
And I think Rice University is in the, at the top of her list right now, but that...
That's so great. Congratulations. We're so proud of you.
She's going to be lots of offers.
And I'm looking forward to you coming back as a finalist. Come back, and we'll congratulate you again.
Well, Serena did very well, but we have some other students who achieved some great results on the PSAT last year also. We have four more seniors that we'd like to recognize this evening as commended scholars for their achievement. Madeline Finley, Jacob Kyle, Alec Gramba, and Catherine Shelburne. Would you come forward?
I didn't mention this earlier, but parents, please feel free to come up and take pictures. We're going to take an official picture to put on our website and brag through our website and our social media, but we want you to do that, too. So y'all come on back up here. Come up, and I think Dr. Kincaid's going to talk about you a little bit, too, while we take a picture of you.
Yeah, these, I told you, there were millions of students, about a million and a half students who take the PSAT National Merit Qualifying Test, and of those, about 4,000 are identified all across the country as commended students. And we have four of them right here in Belton ISD, and they, too, will, because of their high achievement, will qualify for admission into some top universities in the country, wherever they want to go, and they'll get some nice scholarships as a result of that as well, depending on the university. And we have a banner for them as well that will hang at Belton High School.
Bring on the banner. Come on. Get that banner up here and a photo op. Okay, you're going to have to redo all those pictures now, the banners in. Okay, these banners are pretty cool, right? And I don't know where they're going, but that's going to be fun. Front lobby, on display. Bragging rights. We are really proud of you and excited about this way of recognizing you, and we just want you to know how proud we are of the effort you've put forth to achieve this level of commendation. Take as many pictures as you want. Take as many pictures as you want, folks. We can wait for pictures. Where are y'all going to school? Wanting to go to school? Top choice?
All right, Alec, where are you going?
Northwest.
I heard that was great.
Okay. DCU, all right. There you go. And I love that picture. Students with attitude. I love it. Parents, there you go, parents. Congratulations. We are really proud of you. So exciting to see this kind of achievement by our students. It's a goal of ours.
Thank you, Mrs. Jordan, for joining us.
Kenan is also going to be talking about this. Are you going to talk about it now?
I know. I'm going to save that for my superintendent's report. But this is, I will remind everyone and we, our principals have been talking about this is one of our highest priorities.
That's right.
In Belton ISD, we want to stretch all of our students, including our top students. And so we have five students in that picture this year. We want some more next year.
There you go. Working hard to get them there. All right, we'll hear more about, about the efforts in there. But let's recognize some more students in a different area who have achieved great things. Our FFA State Convention Awards.
Good evening. In addition to being the sixth largest in the state, the Belton FFA chapter continues to be one of the most celebrated. At the Texas FFA Convention held this past July in Corpus Christi, the Belton chapter received the Golden Horizon Award for the multi-teacher division. The highest state rating given to a chapter this award recognizes exceptional chapter involvement and activities. Eight students received the Lone Star FFA Degree, which is given to FFA members who have been active in the organization for at least two years, meet academic criteria, and demonstrate leadership skills. The Belton students receiving the degree were Rachel Barnett. If y'all can start.
Oh, come on up.
Here. Rachel Barnett, Joel Harden, Francesca Harden-Landon, Kyle Hobbs, Ruben Latimer, Eric Martinez, Eric Obraden, and Matty Sage. Additionally, student Tyree Ransom, who has graduated and moved on, placed 11th statewide in extemporaneous speaker competition. The advisors for the Belton FFA chapter are Brad Hobbs, Josh Flowers, Mitchell Hill, Jeff Heffernan, and Annie Fogle. Congratulations.
All right, so, and sponsors? Come on, are you going to take pictures? You can come up and be part of a picture. You can do both, right? Okay, let's, let's get them in. We're going to take picture. But we want our advisors, I said sponsors, our advisors. Are you representing the advisors tonight? Everybody else, great. Well, thank you for being here. And you'll take care of these certificates for those who aren't here. And our FFA program has a history of being strong and a great legacy of excellence. And it's a great opportunity for our students to achieve some leadership recognition. Congratulations. Thanks for representing us at state. Good job, guys. Always time for one more photo op. All right, well, the Temple Rotary Club recognizes an educator of the month.
All right, and we have another outstanding educator which helped create that foundation for our kids in Kevin Postville. Kevin, come on up. Kevin's a seventh grade English Language Arts teacher at Lake Belton Middle School. And he's in his fifth year in education, all with Belton. Mr. Postville is an energetic classroom leader who inspires. His students-centered approach fosters creativity, expression, leadership, and growth. And students know that Mr. Postville believes in them and they work to make him proud. Kevin has taken on the coordination of the LBMS Academic UIL Team. And participation has drastically increased. Mr. Hobson, principal at Lake Belton, stated, "Mr. Postville is an exceptional teacher that has the ability to truly light up a classroom with inspiration. He maintains a positive attitude even in the face of adversity, leads by serving, and continually strives for success. His actions reflect his desire to give back and influence positive change in the world around him."
And it's my understanding you've already gotten to have lunch with the superintendent and the Rotary Club. So congratulations.
He did. And I learned some, I learned something really neat about Kevin. He was a sports writer for the Clean Daily Herald before he got into teaching. And, and I think that's pretty neat. And.
Crossed the great divide.
A great job of helping our kids learn to write, which is another one of our.
Exactly. Very important. Awesome.
Thank you, Kevin.
Great. Congratulations. And again, thank you to the Temple Rotary Club for their sponsorship of this. Dr. Muller, you want to help us recognize our awesome principals? We are so fortunate to have strong educational leaders at our, all of our campuses. And this is a good time to pause and recognize them.
Yes, I couldn't agree more. The governor has declared October is Principal's Month. His proclamation reads in part, "As school leaders, principals are entrusted with our most valuable resource, our next generation of leaders. These students are a promise for our, our future. And it is critical that they receive a rigorous and well-rounded education. At this time, I encourage all Texans to acknowledge the important role principals play in ensuring that every child has an access to high-quality education. So as I call your name, if you would come to the front." So our Belton ISD principals are Sue Banfield, Belton Early Childhood School. If you'll hold your applause till the very end, that'd be great.
We can hold that for Sue. Come on.
Elizabeth McMurtry, Chisholm Trail Elementary.
Elizabeth.
Amy Armstrong, High Point Elementary. Tiffany Weiss, Leon Heights Elementary. Judy Schiller, Lakewood Elementary. Jennifer Connor, Miller Heights Elementary. Rebecca Vaughn, Pertle Elementary. Stacy Cox, Southwest Elementary. Julie Manley, Sparta Elementary. Michelle Tisch, Tarver Elementary. Chris Hobson, Lake Belton Middle School. Joe Brown, North Belton Middle School. Kevin Taylor, South Belton Middle School. Chris Dubois and Jill Ross, Belton High School. Ben Smith, Belton New Tech High School at Wasco. And the coordinator for the DAEP or the Discipline Alternative Education Program is Amelia Oliveras. Amelia, if you'll come.
Okay, y'all gonna have to crunch together in here somewhere.
We have somebody up here.
Make two rows. Make two rows. Come on. Y'all make two rows and, and we'll keep talking about you a little bit.
Chris is probably too tall for that. Yeah, there you go.
There you go, Chris. Ladies and gentlemen, we are very fortunate in Belton ISD to have strong educational leadership at our campuses. And these folks work many, many hours on behalf of our students. They have the job of being educational leaders and CEOs and building administrators and have, wearing lots of hats, doing lots of things, all on behalf of our children. Thank you. We appreciate you. And they have a little banter between them.
They're great.
Okay, and also each month, we like to recognize one of our Big Red Community Partners. We're so fortunate in Belton to have a strong and supportive community of our schools. And so tonight, we're gonna give a Big Red Community Partner Award to Temple College.
Temple College. In keeping with the focus on high-achieving academics, Temple College has been an integral part of Belton ISD's dual-credit offerings. BISD students participating in Temple College offerings have the benefit of a great support system that meets monthly to see how the district and Temple College can better serve our students. This hands-on approach to supporting our students allows for long-term impacts. This year alone, Temple College has connected BISD students with 529, again, 529 three-hour credits just this year. These college credit opportunities have taken the support of many at Temple College, including their Board of Trustees, Administration, and Faculty. Dr. Dan Spencer, Associate Vice President, and Kristin Griffith, Director of Dual Credit, are here to accept the recognition of Temple College as this month's Big Red Community Partner. Thank you.
What a great opportunity for our students to get dual-credit and, and get a head start on their college experience. And we're so fortunate to have a great partner in Temple College. Thank you very much for that. Listen, I just wanted to mention a couple of other things just to make sure the board is aware. The Belton Education and Richmond Foundation had a tremendous red carpet event last week. Haven't heard the final numbers yet. Still waiting on them to get all the proceeds in. But just a great event to, to provide funds for teacher grants and student scholarships. And so thankful for, again, how our community came together to support our students. And also, just in case you haven't seen on social media, our Marching 100 has had two consecutive weekends. Last weekend, they were the champions of the Midway Marching Preview. And this weekend, they were a finalist at the prestigious Texas Marching Classic down in Round Rock. All getting ready for district that's coming up this next weekend. Really significant, a lot of hours by those students and, and the parents and, and the band boosters role. So we're very appreciative of their work and excited about what's coming next, next Saturday.
Next Saturday, the 21st.
All right, so. And that's all I've got. Didn't miss anybody? We get them all recognized? Thank you all. You're more than welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting, by the way. But I also understand that you high-achieving students don't want to go study. And so we understand if you, if you leave before we get on with the rest of our meeting. But again, you're welcome to stay. Okay, we do need to pick back up. And I want to go back to our public hearing regarding the 2017 School Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas, or the FIRST Report. Deanna Clavel is going to give that report. And so it is 6:25. And we will call that public hearing to order. Thank you, Deanna.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Pittenger, Board of Trustees. Dr. Kincaid, and I appreciate the introduction. This is a public hearing as required to discuss the 2017 Schools' First Financial Accountability Rating System of Texas, also known as the FIRST Report. The FIRST Report was adopted during the 1999 legislative session and was implemented in 2003. The district staff, student, and financial data is reported to the state through the Public Education Information Management System of Texas, also known as PEMS. In 2015, the FIRST Writing Guidelines were restructured. These changes were authorized by House Bill 5, Section 49, as part of the 83rd Legislative Session. House Bill 5 amended Section 39.082 of the Texas Education Code to require the Commissioner of Education to include processes in the rating system for anticipating future financial solvency of school districts. In 2017, FIRST was the third and final phase that was implemented for this last year. The new ruling includes 15 indicators and required a comparison of higher scores to previous years. A district's financial accountability rating is identified as an A-through-D letter grade. A is equal to a superior rating and is the highest rating possible. A D is a substandard achievement and is the lowest rating that can be received. In order for a district to receive an A or a superior rating on the FIRST Report, they must have received a 90 or higher as their overall score. The first five indicators are a yes/no response, which generates a pass/fail for the first part of the FIRST Report. The Belton Independent School District has a response of yes to all five of these indicators that are part of this section. Indicator 1 identifies that the district has submitted their annual financial report to TEA by the required deadline of January 28. Indicator 2.0A identified that an unmodified opinion was provided by the external auditor for the annual financial report ending August 31, 2016. Indicator 2B identifies that the annual financial report was free of any instance of material weakness. Indicator 3 identifies that the Belton Independent School District is in compliance with the payment terms of all of its debt agreements. Indicator 4 identifies that Belton Independent School District made timely payments to the teacher-retirement system, the Texas Workforce Commission, and the IRS, as well as other governmental agencies. Indicator 5 identifies Belton Independent School District as having 13.87% increase in student membership over a five-year period. And meeting this criteria automatically passes the indicator for the district. Indicator 6 calculates the cash on hand for the district. The Belton Independent School District has 93.7 days cash on hand as of August 31, 2016. And therefore, according to the scale, allows us to receive 10 full points for this indicator. Indicator 7 calculates the district's debt ratio. Belton Independent School District has a debt ratio of 4.0732. And according to the scale, allows us to receive 10 points for this indicator as well. Indicator 8 determines that the district had a change in student membership of greater than 10% over five years and automatically passes this indicator for the district. Indicator 9 reviews whether or not the district had general fund revenues that were equal to or greater than its expenditures or that the cash on hand was greater than 60 days at year end. The Belton Independent School District has cash on hand of greater than 90 days, as identified in the earlier indicator, and the revenues exceeded the expenditures at year end. Therefore, we received the full 10 points. Indicator 10 determined that the Belton Independent School District had a debt service coverage ratio that was sufficient to, to meet the required debt service. Indicator 11 calculates the district's administrative cost ratio. The Belton Independent School District has an administrative cost ratio of 7.86%. Belton Independent School District also had an average daily, average daily attendance, excuse me, of 10,009, which placed the district under a more restrictive criteria to meet. And we were still able to receive the 10 full points. Indicator 12 is a student enrollment for BISD did not decrease. Therefore, we received 10 full points on this indicator. Indicator 13 identifies the information submitted to the PEMS system for the annual financial report. And our variance was less than 3%. Therefore, we received 10 full points on this indicator. Indicator 14 states that the external auditor did not find any instance of material noncompliance and allowed us to receive a full 10 points. Indicator 15, the district did not receive an adjusted repayment schedule for more than one fiscal year due to an overpayment of the foundation school program. And therefore, we received 10 points. The Belton Independent School District received 100 points out of a possible 100 points and has a superior achievement rating for the fiscal year 2015, 2016. This is the sixth year in a row that the Belton Independent School District has received a perfect score on the FIRST Writing through TEA. The outline shown here identifies how the ratings have changed between the letter grades A through D. And you can see here that in the previous year, in order to receive a superior rating or an A on the FIRST Report, a minimum score of a 70 was required. And through the restructure process, you now have to receive a minimum score of 90 in order to receive a superior achievement rating. This concludes our public meeting on the FIRST Report. I'll open it to any questions or comments.
Yes, this is a public hearing. So anyone wishing to ask a question or make a comment, they do so. Hearing none. Does any board member have any question or comment?
Which is at our appreciated good report. Obviously, very good report, well-presented report. We take very seriously our stewardship of public trust as trustees. And this is another indicator that we are meeting that goal of being good stewards. So thank you for your work and, and everyone in the business office effort. Dr. Kincaid, everyone for your efforts to help us meet these standards. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
It is 6:33, and we will close this hearing. Public hearing. Next item. Oh, next item, sorry. You, hang on, public comments. I want to go back and try and pick everything up. I didn't, did anybody, I didn't see anybody sign up? Is anybody wishing to address the board at this time? Hearing no takers, well, go on. There you go. Superintendent's report.
All right. I did have a couple of things to add on the PSAT and superintendent scholars. I just didn't have my notes up there, up here with me I just didn't have my notes up there, up here with me a few minutes ago. Last Wednesday, all of our students in grades 8 through 11 took the PSAT, and as you saw with Serena, the 11th grade is the National Merit qualifying, National Merit Scholarship qualifying test, the NMSQT. And those are the highest-scoring students in the 11th grade, or the students who received that designation. In the 10th grade, in Belton ISD, we recognize our highest achievers as superintendent's scholars. We've been recognizing our 7th grade students as junior scholars, and at the 10th grade level, we recognize superintendent scholars. And I just want to commend Christina Flores and Dr. Lovesmith for their work on our superintendent's scholars program this year. We made that a priority when we set some goals, and we spent some time visiting with students this summer about what it means to be a National Merit Scholar and how they can raise their scores. In fact, we had a focus group meeting this summer and just talked to the students, and we learned a lot from our kids about how busy they are, the number of courses and activities that they're in, and we asked them what would it take to get them to spend some more time preparing. And we were planning to write an incentive program for them, but they were so impressive, we said, why don't y'all write your incentive program and bring it back, and we'll talk about it. So we had a second meeting with them and developed a program and implemented that this fall through last week's test, and will be continuing to implement that plan as they did request some college visits from us, and so we'll be doing some additional things with those students. But I'm really proud of Christina and Dr. Lovesmith for embracing that with me this fall, and we look forward to some great results for that work. And Dr. Lovesmith will provide you with some more information here in a bit. Enrollment and demographic update next Friday is snapshot date, October 27. That's next Friday? Maybe that's two Fridays. We currently have 11,547 students enrolled. That represents an increase of 431 students over last year. That's about a 3.7% increase overall. As you know, our growth has been the greatest at the high school level, where we currently have 3,382 high school students, and that represents about 5% of growth at the high school level. And I might remind you that this is a UIL realignment year, so our snapshot data that we submit to TEA, it will use the official count of the high school for our UIL realignment data, so that 3,300 or 3,400, wherever we land on the 27th, will go to UIL for realignment in 18, 19, and 19, 20. So it won't impact our new high school yet, but it will be our last realignment before we open the new high school. Our percentage of economically disadvantaged students is approximately 42.6%. That's slightly down from last year's 45%. However, students are still submitting their paperwork for the Free and Reduced Lunch Program, and that number may change over the next several days as we approach snapshot date. We have 52.6% white, 33.5% Hispanic, 6.8% African-American. We have 4.2% of our students who consider themselves as two or more races. 2% are Asian and 0.6% are considered American Indian, and our military-connected student population is now about 8% of our total student enrollment. So I'll provide you some more information next month after we take our official count on October 27, but I just wanted to give you an update. Significant growth this year in Belton ISD as we expected in Plan 4. That's all I have.
Thank you. A lot of numbers, and so I'll wait to see them. Lots of numbers. Really excited about the efforts being made towards our advanced academics and these students. Great thing. So thank you. Thank you very much for that. Anybody else have any questions? Let me just mention, I don't think she'll be okay with me saying, Sue Jordan just got a call from the hospital to go up there for her mother. She is critically ill, and so your thoughts and prayers for Sue and her family would be appropriate this time, and frankly makes everything we're going to do from this point forward in perspective as not as important. So, anyway, blessings for Sue. But, on that transition, we have spent months gathering information, receiving feedback, going through a process of discussion on an issue that is compelling public interest. We have had a lot of response and a lot of interest in our community about the name, mascot, and colors for our new comprehensive high school. And as we have said repeatedly since we've started this process, this comes down to a choice. It's a decision and a choice that we're going to make. We have received input from hundreds of people and dozens of different avenues and venues, but essentially, it comes down to a choice. I think it's worth repeating again. This does not have an impact on student achievement, the kind of things that we're talking about in some, both prior to this item and following this, when we talk about some of the things that are going on. But it is something that's important to our community, and so it's due our attention. So, anyway, it is decision time. We talked about this quite a bit last month, and so what I suggested at that time, that we come to a decision this month. This was a little sooner than our original timeline, but I think that's appropriate. What I'd like to do, just to move through and see how fast we get there, obviously with six of us, it might take a little longer to get to four, but it takes four, a majority, to come to a conclusion. So we'll take the name first, we'll do the mascot next, and we'll do the colors third, and so we'll just kind of go around in order. And so, for example, if we start with the name, I'll reiterate what I said last month, that I believe Belton should be at the beginning, and Lake was obviously something we got a lot of feedback on, and so Belton Lakeview High School or Belton Northlake High School are the two that stood out to me. Belton Lakeview is my first choice. Mike?
Well, thank you again.
I said Belton Lakeview High School was my first choice. Belton Northlake was my second choice. If you want to do first, second, third, or just one, that's...
Okay.
We'll just, and we'll see where we are. Let's just go around. Everybody say what they want, and then we'll see where we stand.
Okay.
And start looking for motions if we get there.
Since last month's meeting, my thoughts on the name really haven't changed. I haven't had a lot of feedback from anyone on anything different than what I said last time. My top choice is Belton Lake High School, followed closely by Belton Lakeview High School. So those are my top two choices.
Okay. Leo?
I had lots of input from lots of people, just like everybody else has, but I'm still go back to, the Belton Lakeview is a good one, but I still like Lake Belton High School.
So, like Belton.
I guess for my number one choice, I'd like Belton High School.
My number one choice would be Belton Lakeview High School, followed closely by Belton Lake or Lake Belton High School, either one.
Okay. Ty?
Additionally, my first instinct was Belton Memorial, but as I've gotten more and more community input, especially this last month, a lot more laser-focused from people contacting me, I think Lake Belton will be my first choice based on responses that I've heard, and Memorial would be my second choice.
Okay, so we're three and three, which is exactly kind of how that plays out when, and if Sue was here, I guess she might have gotten to, or might have had something else. So at this point, we have, I guess we can talk about this. It appears that we have three of us prefer Belton Lakeview and three of us prefer, well, actually, I say that, Lake Belton. There you go. And then Belton Lake is secondary. Y'all want to negotiate? How you want to do this? Want to take a vote and see who...I'll entertain a motion, and we'll see if we get four votes, or do you want to lobby for what you got? So it's sound, we're narrowing this down. It does sound like. Belton Lakeview, Belton Lake, or Lake Belton, I'm sorry. Belton Lakeview, Lake Belton. So which comes first, Belton or Lake? I like the B. I'm going to push for the B.
It was, Leo was the other one besides me that said Lakeview.
Lake Belton.
Who else said Lakeview?
Oh, I did.
You said Lakeview?
Yeah, my second choice was Belton Lakeview.
What was your first choice, Mike?
Belton Lake.
Belton Lake.
So I think we have more Belton Lakes, don't we?
We have Lake Belton.
Or Lake, I'm sorry, Lake Belton.
Three Lake Beltons. Belton Lake. That's right. I'm sorry, I wrote it down. Belton Lake. We have, okay. Where's my secretary taking notes here? Lakeview, Belton. If you just go with first votes, Lakeview, Belton Lakeview, Belton Lake, Lake Belton, Lake Belton, Belton Lakeview, Lake Belton. So there's three Lake Beltons, two Belton Lakeview, and one Belton Lake. Thank you. That's correct. So, there are three votes for Lake Belton. You know?
Hey, Randy, during the process, the thing that kind of got me on the Lake Belton was the suggestion that somebody that I really respect their opinion said, you know, when we play the Round Rock schools and you play like Stony Point or some of the others, people drop the name Round Rock from the name, and they just become locally as Stony Point or, you know, whatever some of those high schools are. And they said, if you want to keep Belton in the name, where you've always got Belton in there, you go Lake Belton, because they're always going to have to say Lake Belton High School. And I just said, you know, we talked about how much it meant to have Belton in the name, and so that leaves it in there the whole time. They can't shorten it to have a nickname as something.
Although we do have, and I would say the other side of that, I've heard the other way, is, well, we have a Lake Belton Middle School, and it's called Lake. I mean, it is referred to as Lake. And so, frankly, that's my concern with using the same name that we have for a middle school, the confusion potential for a middle school and a high school with the same name, and that's why that is not the preferred. And I wanted the B first. So, that's me, but I hear you. That's a reasonable argument.
And I think we said that last time, and Jeff said we had a Belton Middle School at one time.
Yep.
And we had Belton High School and Belton Middle School. That was another...
That's right. That's right. That's right.
My adult process, too.
That is true. Good point. Anybody want to change a preference? Are we going, how are we going to reach an impact? Do you want to somehow...I'm not, if you want to...I'm not going to change my preference, I'll tell you that if anybody else wants to. I mean, I don't know how you're going to get, how we're going to get to four, so. Anybody want to try?
I'll change my preference.
You'll change your preference to what?
To agree with the guys that want Lake Belton.
Okay. Are you making that in form of a motion?
Sure.
So we have a motion for Ms. Lee for, to name the new high school, Lake Belton High School. Is there a second to that motion? Have a second for Mr. Norwood. Any other comments? All in favor of that motion? Raise a hand. We have four in favor, all opposed. That'd be Mr. Callen and myself opposed, and we have a name for comprehensive high school number two, Lake Belton High School. Alright, so let's talk about mascot. Mascot next. Let's go in reverse order. Ty, you get to go first.
I like Broncos.
Bronco, okay. Janet?
Broncos.
Jeff?
I'm going to go with Broncos, but I'm also going to give my reason. Because of all the discussions that have taken place and trying to tie, keep it tied to Belton, I thought it was cool. I mean, I'm not a native to here, but even some of the natives didn't know the history, and I've actually been able to talk to people about that. They're like, well, why Broncos? I mean, Broncos has nothing to do with...I was like, actually, if you go back in time, this is what was determined, that, you know, the journal was called the Belton Bronco. It does have history to it. It's different. I like it. Ever since it came out, you know, I was, I wanted the War Eagles. Nobody else backed me.
That went over like the tree.
Notice I didn't say that much. Broncos. I just think it really ties in the history of the town.
Okay. Will?
It started off as Patriots. That was my favorite going into this.
Me too. Hang on, you had your...
But...
You don't ever interrupt, Randy. I'm sorry.
But since then, it has become Broncos.
Alright. Mike?
Well, my, again, first choice hasn't changed since last meeting. It remains Tigers. My second choice, close behind, is Broncos, because I like that, you know, what Ty said last meeting about the rodeo tie-in, and I think we can create a sense of community in that area around mascots related to that, so. But Tigers is my first choice.
Okay. My first choice is Tigers, because we asked for community input, and the overwhelming input from the community was for Tigers. The only thing that was even close to a second was Bengal Tigers, so I'm going to vote as a representative of the community, those who have talked to me and say Tigers, but clearly, we have a majority for Broncos, so who wants to make the motion? A motion for Mr. Taggart for Broncos to be the new mascot. Is there a second? Second for Mr. Camden. Any other comments or questions? All in favor of the motion, raise a hand. That's four, all opposed. Mr. Callen and myself, and that passes. Go Broncos. We have a name, Lake Belton. We have a mascot, Tigers.
I do want to say...
Broncos. I'm so sorry. Thank you. It passed. We got it on the right.
I do want to say that this discussion will need to continue at some point in regard to our middle schools. It's not over. So we need to figure out a path of, the best path forward in regard to our sports teams on our middle school level.
Really a good point, because we haven't drawn attendance boundaries. Obviously, that's premature, but assuming there are feeder patterns, then we'll want to bring this, that issue up, and so we'll need administration to...
And I also want to add, since Randy added his point of view, I'll add my point of view, which is, up to this point, our decision was based on whether it was Tigers or not Tigers, and so to me, the overwhelming decision was that it should not be Tigers.
Fair enough. It is Broncos. Okay, we'll start in the middle with colors. We have the Lake Belton Broncos, and now we need colors. Let's see, who's in the middle? Leo?
I like red, white, and blue.
Okay. Red, white, and blue. Okay. Jeff?
There you go.
I like red, white, and blue.
Sorry. Red, white, and blue. Mike?
I like red and silver.
I guess it was two Thursdays ago. This is one time I get to say something, so. Two Thursdays ago, I was at the pep rally. My daughter Rebecca was doing the bells, and we sang the school song. And yes, I know all the words. My grandma taught them to me when I was a little kid. It was a big deal to stand there and know the words to the school song. And it says three times in the school song about red and white, and it talks about the boys, and it talks about the colors. And that was really, I guess, that was my moment right there, my moment that that belongs to Belton High School, and that's their legacy. And this is a time for new beginnings and a new legacy, and I don't want to take away from an old legacy and borrow from it, and I would like to start a new legacy for these new people that are coming on. So, I think, we've obviously gone in a different direction on the mascot. I would like to, I think we said something about take away the black and the white last time because they were, you know, auxiliary colors or whatever. I personally, and a lot of people have suggested this to me, with multiple mascots involved, but black be the primary color. I like black and silver. I think that's a, they're strong colors. They go with Broncos. I'm not a Raiders fan, but the silver helmets and the silver pants look really cool. I like that. I think if you introduce the black as the main color, then you don't have two go-big reds, because to me, you only have one go-big red in the district. It longs to Belton High School and that legacy to me. That's just my opinion. I've heard that from a lot of old-timers that believe that. They don't want to share. It's time for a new beginning, and so my thoughts are black and silver, and that's where I'm at on that.
Great. Janet?
I like red and gold. I just have to go with this particular subject. This one was truly overwhelming.
This one was truly overwhelming, community support that we keep red as a primary color. I mean, I can totally see that. I personally can, since we've chosen a new mascot, I could totally see going with totally different colors. I think it could be done, it would be difficult, but we could do it. But on this particular issue, I mean, it was, it was very high majority, keep red as a primary. People were not overwhelming that it needed to be red and white, but every, a lot of people wanted to keep the red. So, for that reason, and also for future expense of changing out middle schools and any elementaries and things like that, um, it's cost-effective to keep a red. It's a, it's a little odd, but I think with a good, strong secondary color that's different, I think, I think it's good. Red and gold.
Great. And, um, again, my answer's the same as it was for the other issues. Uh, overwhelming community response is red and secondary color, as long as it's not white. I think that's also been strong, that it should be something different. Silver or gold's come out. I, I agree that we kind of said, well, black and white are kind of accent colors, so they're gonna be there regardless. So, um, I was with the, uh, silver or gold and I don't really care, because we're a big red community. And I, my position from many old timers is, this is a big red community and red belongs to the community, not just the school. Particularly because we have changed the mascot, I think it's especially important. So, it's red and I, it, we don't have a consensus here, so I don't know how we're gonna get to our second one. Um, it, obviously, we have, um, five of us with red as primary now. So, I guess I would probably say silver. Silver gray is my second, secondary preference, but I'd go with gold. I don't have a strong preference on that. Do y'all want to, where do y'all want to go with that?
Just real quick. My second choice was red and gold and, and I'm good with both. So, I'd be happy to switch.
Oh, your second choice was gold?
Red and gold.
So, is red and silver or red and gold? And I'm, I would say the same thing, I'm red and silver, or I, it doesn't matter to me what the second color is, frankly.
My only issue with, with gold is, just my opinion. I like the gold, I'm not saying that. I just, when you start talking about uniforms and things, there's always a thousand variations of gold. And when you start trying to place all of that, it, it gets difficult. And so, um, so, I mean, it goes from, you know, harvest yellow to, to gold, depending on the work, what school district you're talking about and all that, so.
And that may be why I was thinking that gold, I, because I've seen some gold I don't like and I've seen some I do like. So that's a, that's a good point.
It, it changes and that's the only, that's the part that scares me a little bit.
Silver's more standard?
I, I would think so, but the, the gold's, to me, seems like it changes. And that's just, that's just my opinion.
Okay. Um, we're, I, I'm actually red and gold, I, I'm good with red and gold. You know, red, white and blue's fine with me, but one A, one B to me. Red and gold is, is actually a color that, you know, I'm fine with that color. But I do agree, the coaches and administration athletic are gonna have to, you know, have a fun time picking out a gold that doesn't come across as yellow.
And there's, I think there's several pro sports teams and college teams that we can look at, you know, kind of narrow in exactly what kind of defining color...
I wanted that Nike silver, whatever, gray. Okay, so, so if my notes are right, which they probably aren't, but my notes are right, uh, red and gold has three favored? Well, I'm sorry, three, two. One favored, two secondaries. We have two silver, red and silver, primary. And a red, white and blue, two primary. Well, I just may have confused that even worse, huh? So, at this point, somebody want to make a motion to see, I, I mean...
I moved that we, that we go with red and a shiny gold, or, I don't know how you quantify the gold. I don't particularly like red and yellow, but...
Are you sure you want to do, Rick? Gold instead of silver? Okay. So, I have a motion for red and gold. Is there colors for Mr. Callen? Is there a second?
I have a, wait, I have a...
Well, we have to, I, I have a motion on the table, so before we discuss, we've gotta get a second for that. Is there a second for that motion or not? It may die for lack of a second.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion for Mr. Callen, second Ms. Lee. Now, discussion?
Okay.
Just wanted to parliamentary, right?
Those that wanted red, white and blue, because that was two of you, right? You two?
Leo and Jeff.
Okay. So you already said you could do gold?
Red and gold, I was fine with it.
And what was, do you have a secondary or you...
I would rather do the silver if we're gonna pick another, pick another color. Just because there's so many variations of gold, it's gonna get changed a hundred times over from pictures in the stands to everything under the sun.
Ty, you like black and silver, but silver is the secondary color?
I agree with the gold issue, because you've got like a San Francisco gold, you know, they're the real shiny helmet gold. And then, you've got other variations, you know. I think you need to define it more clearly. You know, like Boston College has a very distinct gold helmet. You know, there, you need to define where you're heading with on gold.
Is silver more standardized from a color, for you guys who are playing in colors, paints and flooring and stuff, than gold is?
I think it is, but, yeah, I think it is. Silver, silver.
Silver, so, okay, for y'all. That, that's probably an open to discussion. We have architects here, I don't know if I want to get complicated enough to ask them, but...
Yeah, they don't want me part of this.
At this point, at this point, I have, we have a motion and a second for red and gold. If that passes, that's what it is. If it doesn't pass, then we can try the next alternative. Anybody? Y'all, any more comments? You'll run a vote on that? Want to vote on the red and gold? All right, all those in favor of red and gold? Have three. All opposed? Three. So that motion does not carry. Now I'll entertain a red and silver motion.
Wait.
That was the next option. Oh, wait, you want another alternative?
No, I'm saying, okay, so we can just change now?
Absolutely. We're gonna vote until we clean slate, you get to vote again. Now, you, yeah, you can vote on every, everyone independently. So is there a motion for red and silver? Leo, do you want? Or, Mike, you want to make that motion?
I'll make a motion for red and silver.
Red and silver. Is there a second?
I'll second that one.
You have a second, is any other conversation? Okay, we're gonna see if we get to four on this one. All in favor of the red and silver? One, two, three, four, five. All opposed? Mr. Taggart? We, we have Belt, Lake Belton High School. Broncos, red and silver. Go Broncos. Ladies and gentlemen, we have this one. And now, Dr. King Cannon and principals, your job is to work with our students to implement this and make this work and, and, and do great things. And, and again, I, we said this before, this is a choice. We've made a choice. And now, our job is to support our kids. And that's what we're gonna all be about and I'm excited about cheering for our Broncos. And so, we are gonna support our kids regardless of what our preferences were. That is our decision and that's where we are. Thank you all for your participation in this process. And, uh, can't wait to read the social media comments that'll be coming over the next few days, huh?
Hey, let me just...
I'm gonna close my account for at least a month.
Oh, yeah, and, and you know, there's so many things that, that we can do with this Bronco theme, with this Western theme, like the, the band, you know, the stampede and the high steppers for the, the dance team. I mean, they're just, and not that those have to be it, I'm just saying there are so many wonderful things we can do with our own culture here as a, you know, old west town. We can do this.
We absolutely have a great opportunity to celebrate. And, and one of the things we do well in Belton is celebrate our kids. And so, I'm, I'm excited about what will come with this. I think that's a, it's gonna be a great opportunity for new, new things to come about. And, and I will say, we all have to be really committed to reminding everybody that wasn't our mascot before. It was a name of the yearbook, perhaps, but it was not our mascot. I did a great job of explaining that, but we need to make sure, because I keep hearing that coming up, that myth. So we'll, uh, we'll keep working on that. And Ty, Ty's done a good job of leading that, but, uh, but it is now our new mascot. So, go Broncos. All right. Next item on the agenda, thank you all for tolerating our, uh, discussions through this and, and watching in and, um, whatever you're tweeting and Facebooking and... I can't wait to read, uh, later. Oh, I'm quite sure, it's all over social media, uh, at this point. I see enough of you with devices in your hands. It's a great world we live in. Okay, well, this is a great time to move into a bond program update. So, it says Jared, but Jared is vacationing. Amy, you gonna get us going on this one? All right. That wasn't as painful as it seemed like it was gonna be, right? Feel bad that Sue wasn't able to be part of that, but... Welcome.
Thank you, we're super excited about...
I don't know if you're gonna have to change your color, but...
No. Nope. We're not, we're not bringing anything forth on Lake Belton High School tonight, so. But we are making progress on that project, it's moving forward. Nor are we here to provide a big update on elementary 11. I think you're gonna do that though, Casey, real quick.
We're just talking about the auditorium in Lakewood tonight.
So, um, I'm gonna turn it over to Casey and Jana. Jared is out of town on his way back today, so we're thankful he's coming back and safe and sound and, uh, you will see him next month, I'm sure.
How long did that take?
So, I think you all recognize me at this point, I'm Casey Nicholson. I've been assisting on all the Belton projects, but, uh, tonight we're gonna focus on, sorry...
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem. Tonight, we're gonna focus on the auditorium renovations and the Lakewood, um, elementary school addition, both of which we highlighted in scope last month. And as we're preparing our final documents here tonight, Jana is gonna touch on some of the interior details. And so, uh, to just kick us off, last week, we reviewed in detail all of these items that are included in the scope of the auditorium. Uh, everything from, um, providing new plaza or accessible entry up at the front of the building, redoing all the seats on the inside of the building or the house, um, updating all your, uh, your plumbing fixtures up in the lobby, refinishing a lot of your finishes across the board, interior finishes. And also, uh, refinishing the stage flooring, adding new curtains, updating the lighting, so it's, it's much more of a modernization of the facility. That scope has not changed, we're just wrapping up the final documents on that. And Jana's gonna give us a preview of sort of what's going on inside.
This is a quick snapshot of that new lobby view at the Belton Wall Street Auditorium. It's a nice facelift. You'll walk in, you see a nice feature wall with some digital screens and the casework down below, so you can store things for events and whatnot, if you wanted to set out cups and plates or flyers. It's a good space for that. You see the new ceiling? We're gonna clean that up, get a little bit of new lighting and then a nice new flooring in that main lobby space. No more popcorn ceiling. Uh, so we'll pass this around and it's labeled...
Can you tell us what we're looking at here?
I will, yes, I will. I'll walk you guys through that. It'll be on the screen a little bit as well. So, inside of the auditorium, the biggest change in here is all new seating. So it's really nice and comfortable seating, there's a sample of the fabric on there, it's a great durable fabric. It's gonna be easy to keep clean and maintain. I believe the warranty is 10 years. So that's, that's just the warranty. It'll, it'll outlive that for sure. Yes. Yes, sir. Um, but then inside of the auditorium house, a new fresh coat of paint, new curtains, as Stacy mentioned, and then refinishing the wood floor. So we'll keep the wood floor in there, but just refinish it, it's got a lot of good life left in it. And then some more acoustic panels in that back wall, that's the image that we're seeing on the top right of this screen. That'll help with the acoustics a bit in the space.
So the chairs are red?
Yeah, I was waiting for you to say that, Jana.
The chairs are red, really, they're, they're red chairs.
Correct. That's the fabric behind it in the picture and then that is the fabric that you got there. Yes, sir. That's correct. I, I know. And then we're keeping carpet in the aisles and some hard flooring up at the front. And that is the, it's a nice facelift. I think you'll walk in, it'll feel fresh, it'll feel like it's been revitalized.
So have, I know it's a tight fit in between the seats, are we, are we making any room?
So, right now, we're right around 850 seats, which is down from what it is right now. I believe there's a thousand seats in there right now. So there just, there's more room. The chair is a bit more modern sized.
The chair is a little bit wider in the, in the knee spacing, it's increased. Yes. Grownups can fit.
And without hitting your knees on them.
Correct. Yes, yes, the chairs today are bigger and...
I assume there's more handicap seats also?
We are. On that cross-section aisle, we're getting a new topping slab to flatten that out and then add in some accessible seating at all three locations there.
It will still be the largest seating auditorium in our area, so, for our district.
Great.
Bigger than PAC, so, you know, with reducing gap, but, but clearly, I think everybody's priority will be to have a little bigger seating.
Be able to get in there, yes. Agreed. Do you have anything else to add?
Yep.
Perfect.
Um, I guess we moved on to the Lakewood, but I just wanted to, architecturally, are there any additional questions on the auditorium? I was gonna flip back to this list here, the scope list. And, and in there, we indicated, uh, a key component of this renovation is ADA modernization. And that ties into the ADA seats. To accommodate ADA accessible seats, that's anyone in a wheelchair or anyone, uh, who uses assistive devices to walk, uh, you have to provide vertical and horizontal dispersion. And so, currently, when you walk into the auditorium, I suspect many of you have been in there multiple times, you walk in and you have the two aisles that go down towards the stage. Uh, those two, uh, two aisles will remain, uh, but we're instituting a cross aisle, uh, in the, in the set here. We reviewed that last month. And so we'll be providing some ADA seating on that cross aisle, as well as a media platform. So if you choose to do board meetings there, you will have a video platform with electronic control.
Okay, well, that, that actually leads me to the next question. Are there changes to the stage being made, proposed in this?
Yes, as we mentioned last week, last month, uh, we are adding a platform lift at the front. And so currently, the stage has two stairs. If I'm sitting in the audience, there's two stairs flanking the stage. And then off to stage right, there's an additional stair that's sort of behind the scenes. Uh, what we're taking is the sta, the stair over on stage right, uh, that's in view of the audience, we're gonna be taking up that stairwell and putting in a platform lift. a platform lift. And that's not an elevator. It's just a horizontal platform that raises up. In that way, if you've got a presentation or an event that requires accessibility to the stage, that's in full view of the audience, that means the code requirements.
Are we just refinishing the stage? Are we doing anything backstage with the?
We're refinishing the stage flooring, as we mentioned. We're taking down all the existing curtains. There's currently an operable curtain at the proscenium opening. That's the big rectangle that you see. We will be replacing it in kind with a new curtain at the proscenium opening, as well as fixed curtains at the sides and at the rear of the stage. In the stage right, which currently includes two individual restrooms, as well as a mechanical or electrical room, we will not be upgrading those. They're not required by code requirements.
Okay. So, my other question is, acoustics? Are we doing anything with acoustics and that?
Yes.
All that system?
Yes. We didn't, we've been working with our electrical engineers, as well as our mechanical engineers and Jana here about interiors. And so, we'll be adding additional acoustic panels on the perimeter of the walls. Right now, if you go in there, they're like two feet by two feet every 10 feet or so. It's not helping you. We're also working with technology to appropriately space projection screens for viewing, both in terms of a more intimate board meeting and a larger presentation, as well as placing the speakers appropriately to eliminate the reverb. We don't want the person sitting in the last row hearing it two seconds behind what is spoken.
Right. So, and you've referred to that several times. We've talked about, sometimes when we're recognizing students or we have a crowd, this room's getting kinda tight.
Yes.
We've talked about multi-use of that facility, potentially ours moving if we can not mess up a good auditorium by our being there.
That's correct. And so, to enable that, we are not building a fixed podium as this. We will have a raised section. It can be moved in, you know, monthly for the board meetings, but we're hesitant to build in something fixed that's gonna prohibit the use as an event space.
Exactly.
I suspect that most of your board meetings would occur down on the floor level, so you're more engaged with the audience.
Yeah, I don't think we wanna be on a stage.
But then, if you do have a big events or recognition ceremony, you may choose to do the recognitions on the stage. But that provides you an option, if you'd like that more visible.
Okay. And lighting?
Lighting is all being updated. We are replacing the fixtures in location. We are also providing basic stage lighting to match similar. But I'm gonna paraphrase here. I believe the current operational is an on-off switch behind the curtain. And we are providing sort of six to seven preset options up at the stage that anyone can go in, and I want all the house lights on, or I want this stage light on. But at the media platform in the center of the auditorium, there'll be more detailed or more advanced controls for someone who's trying to control a little more advanced production.
I'm excited about this. This is something, and I hear, I keep hearing from people, Mike and I were over at U of H B PAC, but I had several comments there of excited about what's happening to our auditorium over here and another venue that's gonna be available to our community, certainly for our schools, but to our community. So, there's a lot of interest in this.
There definitely is.
A lot of pride in this.
We've gotten a lot of good feedback. I mean, we've reached out to quite a few people, and we've heard some positive, you know, we understand it's the gem of the community. Everyone wants it. So, everyone's been there. Mechanical would be mad if I didn't point out it's not gonna be kept at a 55-degree temperature anymore. It's gonna be a little more comfortable, temperature-wise.
Some better control. I wanna add that this is not a performing arts center. It is an update to the auditorium. So, there are some upgrades, such as the lighting, but this is not going to be the high school musical place for theater productions. This would be more for choir performances, elementary programs, community events that require an audience and a stage. And so, just wanna make sure the board understands that.
Doesn't have dressing rooms.
It's not going to be.
But there's been a lot of events. Those of you that have been here a long time, I mean, you've got a lot of events in this when you were kids, right?
I was in several events.
You were in, of course. That's what I mean.
And it did have dressing rooms. They're just the size of a closet. So, I'm assuming those are still there.
Yes, they're cozy dressing rooms.
There's still some closets. Okay.
I just, my grandmother's house was right across the street where those duplexes are, and we used to come down here all the time to all type of events. But my favorite was always the Lions Club show. You'd get the candy, and you'd have the number in the candy and come up front and get your prize. I always wanted TV, but I never wanted the TV, so.
Great, that's right.
This brings back a lot of cool memories. This is really a neat project for the community.
This is a great project, yeah. Agree, agree.
Yes. And as we mentioned last month, a lot of the focus has been on the interiors. On the exteriors, you are gonna have a nicer entrance or souped-up entrance, if you will. You're gonna have your beef pavers out there with room to expand that capacity. And you're gonna have some signage down at the street level, so those driving by who haven't been there yet know where to find it.
Okay. Good deal.
Quick question. The entry ceiling is just gonna be scraped and cleaned, and it's not gonna be raised or?
Same at the lobby and in the house. We're just scraping it and cleaning it. We're not getting into the ceiling anymore than we have to.
We are repairing any bad patches. If you see any water stains, any of that, that's not gonna be replaced, but we're not taking down the whole ceiling.
And lighting?
And the lighting, yes.
Yeah, new lighting. That's gonna look different.
Great. Are we all right if we move on to Lakewood?
Yep.
Okay. So, to remind us here, the scope of this project is, in addition to Lakewood Elementary School, their current gymnasium is in a pre-engineered metal building at the rear of the site, and their current music rooms are in portable classrooms, also at the rear of the site. And as we mentioned last month, we'll be adding an addition on. You can see that red box in the image to the left. We're adding it on to the front of the school, sort of near their playground and running track. So, thus, we will not be needing to demolish any existing site components in that area. I believe the district is going to eliminate the existing portables, or unless they use them for storage. But the pre-engineered metal building at the rear of the site will continue to be accessible for the school to use. By moving this to the front of the site, we're able to connect into the building itself. And so, students do not, do no longer have to go outside to get to gym, nor do they have to go outside to get to music class. It's all connected. The gymnasium, we're gonna come back to a minute to talk about the size, but the two music classrooms are matching our new prototype design. And we consulted with the athletics director or the PE director on the campus, as well as the music representative and the school principal, as well as the project executive committee. So, we've gotten a good round of feedback here. The elevation is down on the bottom right. And again, this is just hitting on some items that we talked about last month when we reviewed scope. Design-wise, we're gonna be matching the existing exterior. So, on the top right, that's the image of an existing portion of the building, and to the bottom right is our exterior rendering. So, our brick veneer, if anyone was curious, we have selected, we're using Acme Brick, which is a local supplier. And we've matched the colors, in case you were curious and wanted to Google. They're weatherwood gray and mushroom brown. Very exciting. But those are the colors. We're matching the design intent there. It is at the front of the school. We're also gonna be adding in those red scuppers, the Belton red. Glazing is gonna be just like our standard windows. So, there's, you know, we're definitely tying into the original intent. The original building was built in, I wanna say, 86. I'd have to look up in my notes. Mid-'80s, the original building was built. We're tying into an addition that was put on in 2004. So, that architectural exterior intent has been carried around the entire facility. But I do wanna go back, 'cause I heard rumor there's some questions.
Before you get off the exterior, and I appreciate you mentioning that, that school's been added on to.
Several times.
But one of the things that's been effective is tying it in, so it doesn't look like it's pieced together.
It is seamless, and you have to be quite knowledgeable of construction as you're walking through the building to see where that is.
There's some interesting, so this is really important, but it fits. The other thing I wanna mention, and I think that little teeny-bitty type down there on that corner has the name on it.
Yes, I apologize. I'm not very talented with this pointer here.
It helps me make the point. If we're gonna put the sign on it, which I really like, let's make it big enough to see. And we, many years ago, went about and said, "Let's make sure it says Belton ISD on all of our schools," because that school, for example, is within the city limits of Temple, and we wanted to make sure, since Belton is not in its name, Belton ISD. So, if we're gonna put the name, we need bigger letters, and it needs to include Belton ISD, is my sense. That's consistent with what we've said on our marquees and all, so.
So.
I like the idea of putting it, 'cause that's a school, one of our schools that doesn't have a name on the sign. It's out at the front, but not on the actual building. I think that's a good idea.
Okay. I'll make sure. I believe that's been the case. I don't know how dated this rendering is, but I'll follow up just to make sure Belton ISD is listed on there as well.
Okay. So, you wanna go back inside?
Yes, I do want to go back inside. I've gotten a few questions lately about the gymnasium side, the size, and I wanted to provide some information here. When we originally were charged with this project, we were directed to match Sparta Elementary, for those that are familiar with that campus. Similarly, a couple years ago, they had an exterior gym, pre-engineered metal building, and their music rooms were elsewhere. Inside their building, they had something called a multipurpose room, which was sort of this, not even rectangular, square, large-volume room. And what they did at that renovation is they repurposed that multipurpose room into two music classrooms and an office and some storage. And then, they added on a gymnasium of about 4,000 square feet. And so, we have a gymnasium here in our, what we call base bid. This is what we were planning to go out with, of 4,000 square feet. Now, 4,000 square feet is hard to conceptualize, but what Sparta has included is a court that is 30 feet by 60 feet. And I'll come back to these numbers. I'm not meaning to confuse anybody by these. We are simultaneously working on Belton Elementary School 11, which is a brand-new facility, and that is based on the prototype at Tarver, High Point, and Shism Trail. And in all of those gymnasiums, you're seeing a square footage closer to 5,000 square feet. And so, Sparta, 4,000 square feet. Elementary prototypes, 5,000 square feet.
Just for the gym part?
Just for the gym part.
Not counting the music rooms and?
Not counting the music rooms, just looking at the gyms. And I'm saying about 5,000, because it varies between 4,700 and 5,000. So, just round numbers are easier to remember. And in those larger gyms in the prototype schools, you're getting a court size that's about 10 feet longer. And so, when we were originally charged with this project, we were told to match Sparta. And in reviewing it with the leadership committee and different programs in there, you know, we noted there's different court sizes and there's different gym sizes. The problem with putting a larger court into a smaller volume is you don't have appropriate runoffs at the end of your court. Your students run right into the wall. It's not pretty for anybody. But that's really what's constricting us. And so, as part of our design, we have put in the smaller gym size, or the Sparta gym size, in is the base bid, with an alternate to expand the building by eight feet to accommodate a larger court size. Now, if we were to truly match the prototypes, we'd actually have to expand the building by 15 feet. Why we're not proposing to do that is, one, we have enough runoff with eight-feet addition, and two, parts of this building are not sprinkled. So, it would be excessively expensive to run the sprinkler lines through the 2004 addition down into this addition. And so, we're trying to be good stewards of the finances. And if we expand the building by eight feet to the west side, it's about 500 square feet. That would get us the full court size.
And I appreciate that very much. The new school designs have a, I mean, they're right at the entry, and so they kinda have a curved and glass front and entry. And so, they, by design, they need more space. So, I wouldn't have assumed that this would be that big. I mean, there's, so it makes sense that it doesn't have to be the same dimensions, 'cause those are designed with kind of an entry.
They are. You're absolutely correct.
Which is different than what this design is. I'm concerned, I don't know what a regulation elementary school gym, court is, but I would hate to build a court that is smaller than what we have agreed.
Absolutely. And so, UIL actually puts forth, UIL puts forth standards based on, I have to look at this acronym. I wrote it down here, cheat sheet. NFHS. If I've got athletic directors in the room, they're probably nodding along here. It's the National Federation of High School Sports, what have you. They regulate an optimum court size for high school, but there's no verbiage in there about elementary school. Now, there are.
How did we get to our conclusion of how our elementary court, and I'm not talking about, again, there's two different issues here. The square footage of the building is kind of built into the design of the building and where it is. But the actual court length, how did we come to that conclusion? I mean, it's supposed to be some standard. We said, "Ooh, we need a," I don't remember what the number, 60, 70-foot?
Well, I can give you the caveat. With a 60-foot court, which is what Sparta has, you can use it for elementary education. If you put a 74-foot court in there, you can open it up for evening events for other associations to use it.
So, think weekend basketball tournaments that want to do.
All of the extra things that we do at our other schools.
Some of them.
What is it? What do we have at our other? So, what, how long, how long is the court at Lakewood in the metal building?
64.
Do we know?
Right, 64. Sorry, I apologize, yes. So, our base bid has 64-foot-long court. Our alternate bid has a 74-foot-long court. I apologize.
10 feet.
10 feet difference.
Do we know what we're moving them from? Are we downs, are we shrinking?
No. I don't have a number on their existing court size. I didn't measure that. I know that Sparta and some of the other buildings have a 60-foot court size. So, you're the ones that you have currently and that you're renovating, or you have renovated thus far, are sticking to a 60-foot court. I've expanded it to 64 for this addition.
I'm not aware, you said other ones. I'm only aware of Sparta, and that was like 10 years ago, so.
Okay. I wasn't sure if there were, I was under the impression that other campuses had renovations. I might have misspoken there. I apologize.
I've got a quick question. So, can we do the expansion that you're talking about and gain it and stay within?
Yes, we, well, we, as we are doing CSP, which is, thank you. I was struggling on the competitive. I was gonna say consecutive, and I knew that wasn't right. Competitive sealed proposal. So, we do not have a contractor on board right now to provide that estimate. Now, when we were doing the bond planning, we did look at recent construction, commercial construction. It's different than residential or what you can do by yourself, you know, designing things. When we were doing budgeting for the district, we. Yes, we have it in as, sorry, I didn't know that was a question.
So, it's currently designed either way. The base, the base design is at the budgeted amount that we believe is gonna fit 64 feet. But we've also got an alternate design in there to be bid to find out if we can.
For the extra 10?
The extra 10 feet. So, that's kinda how you do the alternate.
I would think if you asked the people on board there at Lakewood, they would always opt for having more room.
Of course.
Everyone everywhere.
Yes, yes.
I mean, yeah, I guess the idea is if, I mean, raises the issue. Sparta's too small to do the kind of the things you've mentioned before. I'd hate to build another one like that that's.
But is Sparta?
Let's do it right. Obviously, the question is, can we afford it? But let's not build it and then say, "Oops, let's add on." I mean, that's horribly expensive and prohibitive.
What are we not able to do as part of? Are we missing anything as part of it right now? I'm not aware that we are.
Ability to use it for, I don't, that's a question. Good question.
I would say it's just probably not a regulation basketball court, and I would look to the experts to say that. So, you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have a competitive event there but for elementary PE.
It's adequate for elementary PE.
And we would certainly defer to your athletics team to talk about the competitive use of different facilities, but you will have rec, you know, rec teams use a smaller gym. They're not doing UIL competition or that sort of thing. It's just not, the older the kids get, the less ideal it gets.
Yeah. So, what you're proposing is to do a base and an alternate, a base which matches the 64-foot.
Yeah.
The alternate would give the extra 10 feet.
That's correct.
And we'll know what the price is gonna be.
That's correct. And so, when this goes out to bid, the contractors will be bidding both prices, and then we can make an informed decision based on the estimates on what we would like to pursue.
Okay. So, I would sure hope we'll come in with being able to do the alternate. But before we get off of that, I wanna mention, one of the things that's significant about this design that I don't think I heard you mention tonight, that we talked about before, is we're adding bathrooms. And that's a huge, huge issue at an elementary school, adding bathrooms.
That is correct. And from what I understand, we're adding them in an ideal area. Right now, students playing on recess, which is south of the red addition shown on that plan, are traipsing through that corridor that has academic classrooms to use the bathrooms towards the center of the school. This gets the restrooms directly accessible from the exterior, the playground area, and also allows your 70-student gym classes to have quick access to group restrooms and music classrooms before and after class.
And again, as we've said, there's never enough bathrooms in an elementary school.
There's never enough.
That's a really significant part of this plan and this proposal.
So, if we're understanding the base bid and alternate, we're gonna, if you take no exception to that, we're gonna proceed forward with issuing the documents in that way.
Comfortable with that, going, proceeding that direction, understanding that?
And when I come back to next steps, I'll talk about in December, you're gonna be helping make that decision, or you're not helping, you're making the decision, if we're gonna accept that alternative or not.
You're helping us make that.
Yes. So, if we're gonna let, we're gonna have Jana talk about the interiors for a minute, and then I'll recap sort of the general projects.
Colors.
Colors. So, speaking of the restrooms, this is a lovely rendering of the restroom corridor. This is the corridor right outside of the gymnasium. The gymnasium is behind our back in this view. And then, there's a little bench area, access area. The music rooms are to the right. And the red stripe that you see is consistent throughout the whole campus, the 2004 addition, the original campus, and now this addition. So, we're keeping that red stripe so students can march along and stay in line, and then adding a few more colors in this space, since it is a fun space. It's a music space and a gymnasium, and it is the recess restroom location. And similarly, the finishes for those, we have matched the finishes at the existing campus with one exception being the restroom floors. With all of the other projects we have worked on, we are going with a grout-free, it's an epoxy floor. So, it's a bit more durable. You have no grout to maintain, so we've kinda made that decision. Other than that, all of the other finishes, they are matching consistent in type and maintenance with the existing facility. So, you can keep on waxing the floors the same as you have everywhere else. And I'll pass this around. We do have, and it does lead to a question of the, in the gymnasium, there's always a logo on the walls. And so, we have generically put "Go Belton," knowing that that will be a decision later on of whether or not. Yes, yes.
Judy and crew, I bet, can figure out what they want on their walls.
Like, the point was, we were not planning to put "Go Belton."
Shouldn't say this out loud, but personal preference, don't like yellow around bathrooms?
Fair enough.
Personal preference. Never have understood that one.
It's elementary school color.
Primary colors. All right. What else?
I'm just gonna quickly wrap up here. This month, we've, we are all, once we finalize these documents this month, we'll be issuing the auditorium renovations, the Lakewood Elementary School addition, and the Elementary School 11. All three of those projects are complete in design and will be issued this month, and those will go out for bid. We will be receiving those bids in November and coming back to you in December to select your contractors. Next month, part of our team will be back here. Rebecca Richter will be speaking on the high school project. We just wanted to let you know that we've, in the next few weeks, we're wrapping up the final user group meetings. That's a meeting with each of the individual user groups to make sure we're capturing everything in design. And at your next board meeting, she'll be presenting the design development for approval. In January, we'll be reviewing the interior finishes, and the team will also be talking about the exterior finishes. Now that we have the school name, that should be simpler. In colors. Yes.
Like Belton Broncos.
And just looking forward. And just looking forward past that, uh, the, in mid-December, the high school will be hitting the fifty percent contract document stage, so things will be pretty ironed out. And that design phase will be, the design will be wrapping up in mid-March, too. So we're on schedule, I'm just reiterating, those are the current dates. And then in December, as I mentioned a few times, we'll be back to talk about the three projects that are going out for bid this week, we'll be coming back to select contractors in December. And all of those projects will be ready to hit the ground running in early twenty eighteen.
And since you mentioned user groups and all, I, I don't wanna put you too much on the spot, Judy Schiller, but you've had a lot of input and a lot of opportunity for you and your staff to have input onto the, the design and function of, of how all that space is. Colors and everything, I hope. And colors and everything, you've had input on all that, you and your crew? Okay, feel free to give it whatever input you feel a need to before we get to the finished product, that's, that's one of the things we want. I did wanna follow up, last month, and I, I think, I can't remember, was it Leo brought up the canopy, uh, canopy's the wrong, covered walkway?
Covered walkway. Yes, we, we put that into the project, we put that into a project, both a canopy for the bus queuing, and we, I don't know if we mentioned it last time, we also have canopies above each doorway, that's, you know, to provide a little bit of protection as someone is entering or exiting the door.
That was a really good suggestion and made sense, I went out there and was out there the other day and I was looking at it and thinking, oh, that, that made sense, looked right, so, but you've got that in.
We've added it, how many, um, to how many schools?
Exactly, why, let's not add it, let's do it right. So, good, good, great, okay, anybody else have any questions for? Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Go Jared, be done with his vacations, come on, time to work. Make him work. He's checked social media already, he knows. All right, Dr. Muller, you're gonna talk to us about approving the schematic design and design development presented for the Wall Street Auditorium updates and Lakewood Elementary Music Classrooms and Gymnasium Edition projects?
I certainly can.
That's what we gotta do, right?
Yes, we're asking you to approve both the schematic design and the design development for the Wall Street Auditorium and Lakewood Elementary Music and Classrooms and Gym Edition Project. If you approve these as presented, you just heard the presentation, if you approve these as presented, then we will proceed quickly to the competitive sealed proposals and bring that back to you on the timeline that was just mentioned.
Okay, you've, we've got the update, you've heard the needs, there are motion to approve. Motion for Mr. Staggert, second for Mr. Camden. Any other comments, questions, all in favor of the motion, raise a hand. Passy, Nana, sleep, thank you very much for working with us, thank you very much for your work, thank you all for your input and participation in that process. All right, so we've kinda, it's been a good night for Advanced Academics, hasn't it?
It's been a great night.
Lots of exciting things, we started off celebrating Serena and, and our other students' accomplishments, so give us a, another up, some more update on G T and Advanced Academics.
I will, so I am very excited tonight to talk about Advanced Academics, because this is, we offer a premier program in this area and for our students, and this is at the heart of what we do, is to teach kids and to provide these learning opportunities. And I do wanna take just a second, I know that we saw Christina Flores, this is her first year to join us in Belton as our coordinator of Advanced Academics, and she's done an outstanding job, she's doing an outstanding job, and it's just gonna continue to take us to the next level. The first thing we're gonna talk about is our Gifted and Talented Education Program. We are required to provide an annual report, so the first part of this is gonna be that annual evaluation. And that annual evaluation is based heavily on a self-evaluation done by each of our campuses, which then results in the district rating. And that self-evaluation is actually developed by the state, we use the plan that they have out to carry out for the G T state plan. Each of our campuses evaluate themselves, they turn that in, and upon receiving that, we give ourselves a rating. At the district level, we are rated exemplary, and then that's based on the student assessment, the way we design our program, our curriculum instruction, the professional development we provide, our family involvement, and then we total those ratings up. And then overall, we had nine of our campuses that are exemplary or that reckon, were recognized, and one of that rated themselves as acceptable. We'll continue to work with our campuses to develop that plan. When you look at our G T population, we do look at the number of students we serve, and we look over a three-year per, uh, three-year period. This slide shows, compares our G T identification by district subgroups, and you'll see where each, if, um, criteria of G T students is compared to the district overall percentage of students in that area. You'll note that we do have some areas we wanna continue to work on, specifically among our Hispanic students and our economically disadvantaged. One thing we've done over the last two years is to test all of our students in second grade at Southwest and Miller Heights. And through that opportunity, we have identified students that might have been missed in our G T evaluation process. It's a one that's done based on teacher input or a parent, but sometimes if somebody misses something, we don't wanna take a chance with that. So we have done that, and we'll talk a little bit more about some, what we're looking at in the future with that. We serve nine hundred and forty-two students, which is right at eight point two percent of the district. The state recommends around five percent is the average, and so we're a little bit above that. And we're, we're proud to serve all of our students K twelve. We looked at how we serve our students in K through, um, ele, fifth grade, it's primarily in a pull-out services through our G T. At middle school, we have our pre-advanced classes, and then we'll talk about our A P and dual classes at high school. Our placement is another area that we continue to look at in our assessment of our students, and so right now, we have about a thirty-eight percent assessment rate, which means that we had last year, three hundred and thirty students that were identified. And then once we went through the testing criteria, we had one hundred and twenty-three that were placed. So we continue to look at, at that and what we need to do to, to tighten that.
Deanna.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any way that I could get this, this slide here broken down by demographic and subgroups, just something I request for myself?
Uh, but provided for all of us.
That would be great. Thank you.
Sure. And then, um, we wanna talk about our advanced academic opportunities that we have, because when you really think about, um, we wanted to highlight our secondary programs and what we do for our students there. So in looking at our, sorry, our advanced placement courses, we have twenty-four advanced placement courses. We offer every L A math, science, and social studies course offered through the college board, we work directly with the college board. Our teachers submit their syllabuses to college board for approval, and then students sign up to take the course, and we have, when you tally up all of the students, that's about eighteen hundred and fifty-eight credits that will be earned through our A P courses. We do not put a placement on how many courses a student can take. We encourage students and their, to work with their parents to determine what's best for them and their needs. And then you can see on our A P exams, for the last year, we had, we administered six hundred and sixty exams, that represents three hundred and twenty-seven students. And we had one hundred and eighty-nine of those students that scored a three or higher. That percentage is higher than the state, and we continue to work with our teachers to encourage students to take the assessments. So right now, students are able to take the assessment if they choose to take it or not, and so we are gonna continue to work with teachers to make sure everyone understands the importance of those assessments and encouraging students to take them. In addition to our A P courses, we've talked a lot about our dual, our, well, our pre-A P courses, and what these are, are these are the courses starting in sixth grade that prepare students for A P rigor. And so they, we too work with the college board standards, so when we develop curriculum for these courses, in addition to putting in and aligning courses to the state curriculum, we also align them to college board standards. We have a little over eight thousand student seats for when you total all of these courses up, and there's twenty-two. So we have courses at all three middle school grades and, in the core areas, and then we have several high school courses before an A P courses in play. For instance, there's an A P English III course, so we have a pre-A P for English I and English II. And those prepare students for that A P advanced rigor. We also have our dual credit courses, I see that Dr. Spencer is, is here for this tonight, and we really appreciated the opportunity to recognize them as a community partner. They have committed to meeting with us monthly to just continue to ensure a strong communication between Temple College and Belton I S D in terms of student enrollment, student course offerings, making sure our facilities are aligned to meet the needs of our students. We partner with U M H B, and then this year, we offered online courses through U T P B. We have six hundred and thirty-two three-hour credits obtainable through these courses, and there's twenty-five of those courses. So quite a large number of opportunities for our students in various levels. One of the areas that we have encouraged is courses in dual credit outside of our traditional core courses, and so you can see, since last we presented, we've really expanded with our E M T offerings, and our psychology, sociology, and just trying to add some dual credit courses in our C T, aligned with our C T E. We've done the same with our A P, I didn't highlight earlier, but our A P computer science and engineering were new strands. And then at the heart of all of this are our students, these are our top ten students from last year. And we really look at opportunities in addition to offering courses for our students, and we want to recognize them for their achievements. Last year, we recognized one hundred and forty-eight middle school students for the T I P, and those students are recognized in the seventh grade. They are given an opportunity to take the S A T, just as if they were a, a junior or a senior, they take it at a testing site. Many of them attend Belton High School and sit by our juniors and seniors to take that test. This is last year's numbers, but one thing I would highlight in this program is Christina did an excellent job at this ceremony of really talking with parents about the importance of what this recognition is and how it leads to a potential national merit scholar and the importance of P S A T and S A T at seventh grade. And then one thing we're extremely proud of are our A P scholars, we had ninety-nine A P scholars, and that, that is a, a large achievement for our district, we're proud of those students. What's important to note in that number is that we had twenty-nine students with a distinction. That means that twenty-nine of our students took three, took five or more exams, A P exams, and scored a three point five on them. And that's pretty impressive, and there are three point, on all of them and a three or higher on five. And then we had eight students who are national A P scholars, and they, they took eight assessments and scored a four or higher on those exams, and that is not an easy feat. So we're proud of those students, and then you can see our history of that, so, um, just, and we've made quite growth, and we've kinda stabilized since the thirteen, fourteen year with right at around a hundred stu, A P scholars. And we're continuing to work with our students to, I'm encouraging them to take more assessments that we feel like they'll do well on. And then Dr. Kincanon mentioned earlier, um, this pro, our superintendent scholars program, this past year, we had thirty-two superintendent scholars. These students are identified in their tenth grade year in the top eighty-fifth percentile on the P S A T. And these students are, what we'd like to say is on a path towards national merit semifinalist or finalist, and working towards achieving a top score. Again, Christina has done an excellent job starting to expand the services that we offer these students. And as a result of that, we've offered individualized tutoring, study sessions, Khan Academy, just really trying to push them to do their best on a test they took last week. So we'll be anxious to see what those results are. And then we recognize tonight our five amazing scholars, four that were commended, and, and this is, um, there are one point six million applicants who take the, the P S A T. Out of those, fifty thousand are recognized as top scholars and thirty-four thousand become commended. So thirty-four thousand out of one point six million get to that level. And then, and in terms of a national merit semifinalist, it's one, sixteen thousand out of the one point six million, so, um, very, very small percentage, and we are very proud of Serena. And then we also have, I wanna recognize that our students take the S A T and the A C T, and as you heard tonight, we're proud of Serena for a perfect score. Our average is twenty-two point five, which we'd point out is both higher than the state and national averages. And then the S A T was new format for last year with a revised format of no essay, no longer would there be an essay, reading and writing would be together. And then now, there would be two separate math assessments, one that you can use a calculator and one that you cannot. And our students scored just a hair higher than the state average, that's something we're going to continue to work on, is students being able to do well on the S A T. I will point out one thing that, that's important to know in the variance of scores, is the percentage of students that take the test, and we have about sixty percent of our students taking the S A T, that's a very large percentage compared to the state and national averages. And then, while we're very proud of our program, we're very proud of our students, there's always room for improvement and ways that we can do better. With that, our top priority has been to expand our superintendent scholars program. We administer the P S A T in eighth, ninth, and tenth grade prior to the national merit scholars test. So we would like to make sure that once we get those scores back in December, that we have a plan in place to work with our students in ninth and tenth grade to start them on tutoring before they take the test again. We want to, we plan to incorporate more S A T and A C T strategies in our curriculum, so making sure that our curriculum documents are really tied to those assessments. We'd like to explore expanding our G T testing to all our second graders, so I mentioned that we have been doing that at Southwest and at Miller Heights, but we have started looking at other districts that are, that test all their students, and so we'd like to explore that. We'd like to create a stronger social media presence. If you have not already liked the Facebook page for Advanced Academics, or follow our, the Twitter account, those, those are great social media outlets that we're building, and we are using Belton I S D, A D V, A C A, and that's kind of a standard Advanced Academics handle. We looked at other districts and borrowed it, only put our name in front. And then we'd like to just continue to increase our parent communication and support and development of our program. And we're very proud, very proud of our Advanced Academic students here.
Okay, thank you.
Other information about the delegate assembly, or you wanna give us an update on the convention?
Sure, I, I don't have anything on the delegate assembly, I did not attend that with Sue since she was going, I decided to hit a couple of other, a couple of other sessions. But it sounds like what the, what was discussed in there, there was a common theme in some of the other sessions I sat in, in terms of elections and consequences. At the Fast Grow Schools Coalition luncheon that Dr. Kincanon and, and Sue and I sat in on, um, I guess it was the Friday, Friday at lunch. Ross Ramsey, who, let me get it right, who he's with, yeah, with Texas Tribune, thank you. He spoke for quite a while, said several interesting things, but, you know, big focus for him was getting Texas educators to vote, all of us sitting in this room who are involved in education, making sure that we are educated on the election process and know when and how, and are encouraged to, to take the time to vote for pro-public education candidates. That's one way to, to make a change through the legislative process. So he spoke quite a bit about that, he had a lot of numbers, he was. He had a lot of numbers he was throwing out in terms of the impact that just getting educators out to vote can have. And he focused especially on primary elections for obvious reasons. So, anyway, that was an interesting lunch, and he spoke a long time. Actually, I was very late getting to the next session, so. So, I had that, that I attended. The first, I started with legislative, oh, by the way, back on elections, it was discussed a little bit as well in the Fast Growth Schools Coalition Breakfast that Dr. Kinkanen and I went to Saturday morning, and then randomly in other sessions I went to. The CEO of the Federal Reserve Bank of Dallas spoke a little bit about that as well, but I'll get back to that. The first session I attended was legislative update, and you all had already gone through that, so I don't want to spend much time on it. One thing I found interesting was that House Bill 1645, I guess, allows for special Olympics athletes to earn letters, which I was excited about. I thought that was pretty cool. So, we could have some, I would encourage us anyway, to look at what we can do there for our Belton Tigers and future Lake Belton Broncos that participate in Special Olympics, giving them an opportunity to turn a letter.
Good deal, Mike.
So, that kind of hit home with me. And then, let me see what else. I went to a session on strategic planning that I thought was interesting. Mansfield ISD changed what they do. They wanted everyone in their district to understand their strategic plan, and strategic plans can be a bit complicated. So, they simplified it. They, their superintendent focused on the one thing book and what they could do to simplify their strategic plan. It's a one-page strategic plan that's basic. They expect everyone in the school district to understand it. And then, they also, one thing I found interesting, and I'm not recommending anything, I'm just saying what I sat in on and heard, but they have, that filters down to their campus plans as well, making them a little bit more simplified, having every campus focus on one thing that particular year, and then the administrator of that campus presents what their one thing is and how they're going to focus on it that year to the board, which I thought was interesting. Anyway, so, the other thing that I sat in, oh, there were a couple of speakers that, one thing they mentioned, and we've talked about this time and again, and everyone in here agrees with it, the importance of early childhood education, pre-K education. But what was interesting to me was the two speakers that spoke about it. One was the mayor of Dallas at the Fast Growth Schools Coalition Breakfast on Saturday, and the other was the president and CEO of the Federal Reserve Bank of Dallas, and both of them reinforced how important that is. And one of them, actually, I don't remember which one, maybe the mayor of Dallas touched on, in addition to the importance of education from zero to five, the importance of preparing teachers that are, they're teaching those students. And I thought that was interesting, too. And then, we had a young man, well, I'll say young, I don't know how old he was, he looked young, that did the second general session on Saturday, Hill Harper, who really woke up the audience. He was very interesting and engaging. What I found interesting was, you know, a lot of his, his speech was basically about conquering fear, not backing away and pursuing what you know is right, among other things. But he basically started his speech with, or his presentation by complimenting everyone in the room. All of us were administrators or board members. And he quickly changed gears, and at one point, he asked who in the room was on Instagram, and he was making a point, how important it is to be involved in what your students are involved in and what kids are involved in. And he asked how many people in the room are on Instagram, and he kept saying there are 4,000 people in the room. I don't know if there were 4,000 or not, but there was a big crowd, and he saw seven people raise their hands. So, and he called us arrogant, rightfully so, for that. But I jumped on Instagram real quick.
You noticed then.
Which I, I was already on. But he encouraged everyone to get on Instagram if they weren't. But when I got on, while he was talking, I noticed Angela Teckel was on it, and my guest that was sitting next to me was on it. And I know Dr. Kinkanen and Sue on Instagram, based on a conversation we had later in the day. So, of the seven people that raised their hand, five of them were from here, so. I thought that was pretty good. Not that that, not that that doesn't apply to us, but, anyway, so, I don't have a whole lot more. I'll send my notes from different sessions and handouts, but that's all I can remember.
That's great. Well, thank you for sharing that, and please get those to Connie. Sue had also told me she would get her notes to Connie and, and so we can distribute it out to those of us who weren't able to attend. So, thank you for going and all representing us. Do you want to share anything from your experiences?
Sure. Mike did a really good job of, comprehensive job. I'll just add a couple of sessions that I attended that I really enjoyed were on engineering. One was Birdville ISD, and they have, they focused on a middle school that they have, and they're implementing a pre-engineering program. So, I'd like to know some more about that and really want to take a look at their course sequence booklet and see how they, how they progress through the grades. We're in our third year of engineering in Belton ISD, so next year, we'll have a group of students who all have gone all the way through for four years, and that's something I'm really excited about. So, I'm looking to figure out how to build from what we've got. The other engineering program was from the University of Texas called Engineer Your World, and they have a big grant through the National Science Foundation, and they have been building curriculum for an engineering program. I don't think they're as far along as we are with the schools that they're working with, but they, they do offer a dual credit program through the UT campuses for students who are taking engineering. And so, I actually just got the follow-up email from the presenter tonight with her slides. And I think with us being as close as the University of Texas as we are, that we want to see what they have to offer and see if there's something there that we can use. So, engineering's a program that I'm passionate about, so I attended two sessions on that. And then, Sue and I went to a website accessibility session, just to learn a little bit there. And so, that was very good. We've been working on website accessibility here in the district, and I know Robert Prior did a lot of work on that behind the scenes, but the session was very well done and gave me some insight into exactly what that means. And I learned I need to update my choice of font so that it's easier to read. I'm an old Times New Roman person, and that's not the most accessible font, apparently. So, that was a pretty interesting session. And then, aside from that, I enjoyed the Fast Growth Schools Coalition events and the general sessions as well.
Great. I'm glad y'all were able to do that. Certainly, it's important for us to take advantage of opportunities to learn.
That's great.
Appreciate y'all sharing what you learned and bringing that back to us. Okay. Issues or concerns for future gender administrative reports. I meant to mention this earlier, but this is maybe more appropriate. We have another school today. We have an elementary school, and we kind of intentionally, we talked a little bit about that last month, but we kind of intentionally didn't want to add one more thing for us to talk about necessarily. But next month, we're going to have a workshop where we can talk about process. We hopefully won't go through the same lengthy, laborious process that we went through for the high school, but we do have a process we've used in the past and asked Dr. Kinkanen to prepare that kind of process, what we've used in the past, how we will have input in coming to a conclusion so that we can name, and we'll have that on next month's agenda. Other issues. Ty, got anything? Leo? Mike?
No.
Janet?
No.
All right. Well, would just tell you, there are lots of things going on. Our next meeting, though, and this is important, our next meeting, a regular meeting, is November 13th. That's early because of the holiday week. Thanksgiving is rapidly approaching with that, and so, our next meeting is November 13th at 5:00. So, we'll see you there. We have on our agenda a closed session for personnel, but there is not a need, specific need for that unless somebody has a particular item they're aware of. So, hearing none. It is 8:03. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for joining us. Thank you all for your participation tonight.